On October 22nd, 2020. I further believe that it is neither practical nor prudent for the public to be present at the public body's regular meeting location. We will continue to hold a remote meeting with updated practices to comply with Public Act 101-640 that was signed by Governor Pritzker on June 12th, 2020. Pursuant to Public Act 101-640, since the meeting cannot be conducted at the regular physical location due to the health crisis, alternative arrangements have been made to allow any interested member of the public to hear all discussion, testimony, and roll call votes via the link, Zoom link that is on our website or via our YouTube channel. Um, Jill, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Kowski?
Here.
Mr. Barron?
I'm here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Uh, Ms. Dixon Spivey?
Here.
And I'll call, uh, Dr. Moore's name, not yet, and Mr. Isley, not yet.
All right, um, we are going to head into closed session. Um, sorry, give me one second here. So I moved to I moved to I moved to enter closed session for the purpose of discussing litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of a particular district has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal or when the district finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Isley? I'll give him a moment. Uh, Ms. Harris?
Hi.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Isley, is that you?
I missed, is this a roll call to go into closed session? Yes.
Yes, it is. Thank you. And Dr. Uh, Ms. Oh, and Dr. Moore?
Dr. Moore, you muted. Dr. Moore, you're muted.
Can't you hear us?
Ms. Dixon Spivey?
Yes.
Dr. Moore, do you hear us?
Um, okay.
Uh, just, okay.
Should we just, um,
Yeah.
The eyes have it, so let's go ahead and go into closed session. Um, you guys should have the link in your email and I will see you shortly.
Projections. Good. It would be.
Hello?
Yes, volume works.
That's what I'm looking for. Bye bye.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, you get one of those backgrounds with the with the shield. Those look good.
Do you want me to send you an image there, Craig?
Oh, you can.
Oh, well, then I will.
I'll spit it up for the next meeting.
Very good.
I'm trying to find images to, you know, take different pictures of the different places I am and then, you know, put them behind me so people don't know what what office I'm in.
It's brilliant.
And have some fun. Come on.
Let's see.
Okay, where are we? Do we have Gail?
Yes.
And do we have Joylyn?
Yes.
All right. We are now back in open session. And our first item, it looks like, is introductory reports.
Yes. As our student rep here.
I'm here.
Hi, Maeve. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I am wonderful. So we're going to go to your report now.
Okay, sounds good. Hello, everyone. I'm Eve McAndrews. I'm a junior here at OPRF, and I'm the Student Council Board Representative. I'm very excited to be here tonight and tell all of you about our Home Cozy Spirit Week. Student Council wanted to make sure that the student body had some type of fun events in place of the normal homecoming week to promote school spirit. This week, students have been participating in Spirit Days. Monday was Pajamas and Pets Day. Tuesday was Sports Day. Wednesday was Crazy Hat Day. Today was Throwback Thursday, and Friday is Orange and Blue Day. Each day around 2:30 PM, Ms. Sacklera sends out a video of all the pictures that were submitted. It's a great way to end the day, and we have seen a lot of participation in these Spirit Days from students, staff, and faculty. Hopefully, all of you get the chance to check out the videos and see everyone who participated. We have also been connecting each Spirit Day with a movie so students have the opportunity to answer trivia questions and possibly win a prize. For Monday, we had 30 responses to the Home Alone trivia. Tuesday, we had eight responses to the Space Jam trivia. Wednesday, we had 12 responses to the Halloween Town trivia. Today, we had 15 responses to the Freaky Friday trivia. And Friday, the movie is Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory. On Friday, a small group of students and some staff will be heading out on some of the OPRF buses to spread cheer and spirit to our community. We're hoping to see students and kids out and about in orange and blue so we can throw out some spirit bags to them. Our spirit bags will have beads and some home cozy bracelets that we made for this week. We will also be throwing out some OPRF shirts. We want students to be able to get outside and show off their school spirit. Student Council is also beginning to come up with ideas to raise school spirit in November and December. We are thinking about having some type of trivia night or e-gaming night, but we're still in the process of developing more ideas. We will hope to have tons of fun activities that will promote student engagement and school spirit. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak on behalf of Student Council.
Thank you. And you, Maeve. That sounds awesome.
And I do want to note that Maeve is also a student representative on the Reimagine Education OPRF 2.4 Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Ms. Camerton, any FOIA requests?
Yes, we've had seven FOIA requests and six are resolved.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's announcements. I want to let the community know that we're planning an upcoming meeting where our Board of Education will enter into a conversation about race and race relations. While this will be a discussion among the board themselves, this is an open meeting and is scheduled for Monday, November the 9th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Also, we've had a variety of inquiries about the results from the annual Five Essentials Learning Condition Survey that all Illinois schools are required to give students, teachers, and parents. As we did with last year's data, we will be giving an update in our State of the District Report to the Board in an upcoming board meeting. That report will also include an update on the strategic plan, the Illinois State Report Court, as well as the Five Essentials. Also, I'll give an update in a few minutes on, you just heard me mention, the Reimagine Education OPRF 2.0 Advisory Committee and the work that we're doing with regards to the hybrid for second semester. And last but not least, this weekend, we will be showing Clue, the Home Edition. If you have not purchased your tickets, please do so. There's a link on the website. The first production is tomorrow night, Friday, the 23rd, at 6:00 PM, with a second performance on Saturday. Also, at 6:00 PM, we hope you plan to attend and support our students. And all this information can be found on our website. So I've already purchased my tickets for Clue, the Home Edition. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you so much. All right, now it's public comment. Please limit public comments. Well, public comments, obviously, since we're virtual, are emailed to us, but public comments are three minutes. We ask that they be limited to the items within the jurisdiction of the board. It's not intended to be a dialogue. However, we will respond to questions within two weeks, and we will respond via email. Gail, do we have public comments tonight?
We do. The first one is from Jerry Dombrowski. Dear Board and Superintendent, number one, why are the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and many other district employees on the Steering Committee, also referred to as the Advisory Committee? The point of such a committee is to advise the administration not to stack it with administrators and teachers who are already extremely hostile to showing up for work. You are to be advised. You do not need advice yourself. You've stacked the deck to get your results. Not one single parent is on the committee, nor are there any representatives of parents. Who do you think is sending students to the school? Who do you think is paying the exorbitant tax bills? You talk about stakeholders, but you exclude the second most important ones. Stop using, number three, stop using the state's guidelines as a reason to shut down the school. Most schools in Cook County are open for business in some form or another. No school has had a hard rule not to come back until 2021 like this one does. You've made this school an extreme outlier, and there is no legitimate reason to do so. The thought exchange, number four, the thought exchange questions are entirely useless. Stop wasting taxpayer money to use this service. Ask the parents straightforward questions, and you will get straightforward answers. The next one is from Flo Schumacher. I would like to thank the Board and the administration for your efforts to put together a sensible hybrid plan for the spring semester. I would like also to point out why the recent uptick in cases in Illinois and throughout the United States should not derail those efforts. The idea that COVID will go away soon has been thoroughly debunked. The timetable for vaccine development has been repeatedly pushed back. Even if the vaccine were to become widely available next year, the effectiveness rate of a vaccine would likely be in the 50% to 60% range. As a result, our community can expect COVID infections and positive infection rates to remain in the foreseeable future. We are talking about years, not just semesters. Limiting all students to remote learning until COVID has passed has the benefit of being a zero-risk plan. However, the long-term cost of the plan is too high. It is ineffective for many students and will cause a learning gap which will widen as long as we remain a remote-only district. A hybrid plan will never be a zero-risk plan. Instead, the purpose of a hybrid plan is to identify an acceptable risk of level of risk. A good hybrid plan will permit limited in-person as long as community infection rates remain below a set number. It will also include a temporary retreat to all remote learning when community infection rates are too high. We cannot retreat from the very idea of a hybrid plan anytime infection rates rise. An effective hybrid plan will anticipate this scenario and adjust accordingly. I am optimistic the Steering Committee and the Advisory Committee will continue to keep the goal of acceptable risk in their sights as their important work continues. Thank you for your continuing hard work for our students. The next person's comments are from Kitty Conklin. Good evening, Board. Seeing the oversized swimming pool and auditorium yet again on your agenda convinces me that you have absolutely no regard for either the students, their families, or remaining residents of the Oak Park and River Forest communities. You can't afford $3 million for Project One classrooms for students of all races due to cost overruns, yet you can afford a swimming pool for approximately 100 swimmers who do not represent the diverse student population. Seeing this damn pool on tonight's agenda is an absolutely disgusting statement to the Oak Park community. The next one is from Eric Friedman. District 200 should not continue to push massive spending on a swimming pool that is far too close to what voters already rejected. This type of behavior eroded public trust in addition to worsening the unsustainable tax burden of our community. In the grand scheme of things, this fancy swimming pool is just not that important to OPRF. In the meantime, I know multiple wonderful families leaving Oak Park because of the taxes and schools. Let's focus on having awesome education at a reasonable cost. The next one is from Dave Slade. Of course, this pool is still being pushed. This is getting done by not going to the taxpayers for a referendum until this project is well underway, and then it will be brought up to make the ask for money. It will have to be finished, only and only then will the message be that it is X percent complete and needs to be completed to show us your money. No matter how this goes, taxpayers are on the hook only after the project has begun. Very sneakily done by District 200. Marty Berstein sent the following. Dear Board Members of District 200, My thoughts on the topic of funding for Imagine Project 2 pool are as follows. The Imagine Project segment for the pool ignores the results of a referendum of several years ago that rejected a large pool. No amount of explanation of differences between the project that was rejected by referendum and the pool project 2 of Imagine changes the fact that the voters rejected a pool project of the scope. The Board did an end run around those results. It is the Board's job to accept the results of that referendum and cancel Project 2. The fact that some members of the Board were not on the Board at the time of the referendum does not allow you to disregard those results. The COVID-19 pandemic and all the uncertainty that goes with it is an additional reason to cancel Project 2. Excuse me.
Gail, is there additional public comment?
Yes, I just lost my place just a moment.
Oh, sorry.
No problem. This is from Ross Lozuzzo. It says, Dear Board of Education, thank you for your volunteer service to our community. Our administration made three public presentations a year ago about a pilot program that was going to be rolled out at OPRFHS. The pilot was going to be used to help inform an eventual vote on a single curriculum philosophy for OPRF. During the community roadshow, the pilot program was challenged by some community members based upon its usefulness, such things as statistically significant data, enough students, what metrics, student selection, et cetera, et cetera. Since then, the administration has replaced the word pilot with action research. Apparently, action research was happening last winter and got disrupted due to COVID when our children went remote last March. Two things to please consider. Changing the words from a pilot to action research without informing the public or the Board was not in the spirit of community, process fidelity, or transparency. My understanding is that by calling it action research, the administration did not need the same level of approval that may have been needed for a pilot. The rationale provided was that such action research constantly happens in normal course. Well, I assure you that changing the entire curriculum philosophy for freshman year is not normal course, and magically, the word pilot was changed to action research. Why? Too many in our community, too many in our community. This was simply an end run around by using definitional changes to plow ahead and not allow further community input while our children muddle through a global pandemic, e-learning from home. Two, during the last board meeting, the public was informed that this newly-named action research was disrupted in March, as was all in-person learning. Thus, the teachers involved suggested the action research assessment and evaluation would be more difficult due to the COVID-19 interruption. It will be interesting to see if our administration acknowledges any timeline challenges or simply moves forward without a complete evaluation. Of note, we have not seen a formal evaluation or any data on the possible learning loss that has occurred since March of last year for our normal classes, let alone an action research unit. IESB recommends that such an evaluation should have already been completed. The time and effort associated with these definitional changes and presentations while our kids have been e-learning at home since March, seven months now, is disappointing. No doubt, no one doubts the time and effort our administration is putting in. However, as a board in the middle of a pandemic, I hope you can influence priorities as our students try to navigate a global pandemic, remote learning, and isolation. The sad part is the action.
Tell your time.
I have just a couple more minutes.
Okay.
I can stop.
Okay. I mean, if it's, yeah, I finish if it's just a couple more seconds.
Okay. Sad part is the action research that was described last board meeting may actually prove informative. However, it was not transparent and at a minimum bent the spirit of the rules. The decision to rename the planned pilot program to action research was for expedient sake and has once again strained public trust unnecessarily. Go Huskies. From Monica Sheehan, I appreciate the opportunity to make a public comment tonight. It is in regard to Agenda Item 8.04, It is in regard to Agenda Item 8.04, Imagine Project Two Funding. Due to the cost overruns, renovations of thirty-nine percent of Project One's classrooms have been placed on hold. The estimated cost of the classrooms is $3 million. I respectfully request that the District 200 School Board prioritize and complete these academic facility needs now, paying for them from the $20 million reserve for Project Two and its 37-meter-by-25-yard swimming pool and 650-seat auditorium. Thank you. That is all I have.
Thank you very much, Gil. All right, next on our agenda this evening are policies for first reading. I'm moved to approve the following policies for first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Are you?
Are we doing the consent agenda?
Yes. We're in the consent agenda. You're muted.
Sorry, I'm still getting used to Board Docs and apparently Zoom. All right, forgive me. Let me start this over. So I recommend that we approve the following consent items. Policies for first reading. 7.01 Policies for first reading, 7.02 Policy for second reading, 7.03 Open and closed minutes of September 24th and October 8th, 2020, and a declaration that the closed session audio tapes of January 2019 shall be destroyed. 7.04 Approval of check dispersments and financial resolutions. 7.05 Presentation of the monthly treasurer's report. And 7.06 Resolution for the approval of emergency and pandemic technology purchases. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. H.T., you have a second.
Did anybody want to remove any of these items before we proceed?
Yes, 7.06.
All right, 7.06 is removed. Anybody else?
So are we changing the motion then?
Yeah. Tommy, are you asking for an amendment?
Um. For, well, I'm I'm asking for discussion on that item, so. Then what's the?
Yeah. Can we just go into discussion on that item and then decide if we want to amend?
Oh, yes. Yes. Yes.
All right. I think that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Pruitt Adams, do you want to speak to the resolution?
I'm gonna ask for Ms. Cindy Sador and Mr. Christopher Thane to join in speaking to the resolution. Mr. Dore.
And I. Thank you, Dr. Pruitt Adams. So the resolution is for technology purchases. And what we did is we put in $100,000. When we had discussed about the purchases, what we said is that if we know a purchase is coming up, we would put them in end-of-week notes to let the board know ahead of time. That maybe he's, that would be happening with that is Chris would be looking it up or somebody from his team would be looking it up and seeing what the prices were. But at least we would be giving the board a heads up of what we were exactly looking for and what technology they needed. The problem when you run into a pandemic is the fact of not really, it's not what you would say an emergency purchase, but that is what the state has, emergency or pandemic is falling in the same verbiage. The pandemic is, we are not sure if we can get it. And if we wait a long period of time to try and wait for the purchase, we may not be able to receive the items or the service or we're put at the end of the line. So that's why we were trying to push some of this through so we would actually receive some of our items.
Excuse me, it's also, I think, important to note that technology does not have to go out for bid.
Correct. Technology is not required to bid.
And by required, you mean by the school code? Is that correct or the state procurement code?
Correct. Mr. Thane, did you want to add anything?
No, there's nothing to add. You know, we're just, we'll follow whichever guidance is put there. We're trying to get things moved through so that we can secure stocks, but the oversight is understandable.
Tom, did you have questions?
Yeah, yeah. So my question was, and that this, I just want to make sure I'm clear on it before making, you know, is that this would be for technically unlimited purchases in each up to $100,000. It's basically raising the limit for any pandemic, well, any technology purchase. It's not an aggregate quantity. Am I correct?
Correct.
So it would be for as many technology purchases as we would have.
That's tied to the emergent pandemic. You know, we're looking at, as we go back, as we plan for a hybrid, whether the technological needs for each classroom, so the teachers will have what they need. That's in response to the pandemic because these may be some materials that we previously would not have had to purchase.
Anything further, Tom?
That answers my questions. So I'm, because we've handled this, the consent item agenda differently where we didn't pull it in advance. So now we, if I, because my, my position is not in support of this as it is, so. But I'm not against all of the other elements in the, how do we get out of this?
So I messed it up, so let me try to get, back us out. Um, all right, I'd like to amend my prior motion to approve only 7.01, 7.02, 7.03, 7.04, and 7.05.
Perfect.
Is there a second?
Thank you. Second.
Okay. Um, I believe we're ready for a roll call, Gil?
Yes. Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Mr. Mark, Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
And Ms. Dixon Spivey?
Yes. All right, now I move, we approve 7.06 Resolution for Approval of the Emergency Pandemic Technology Purchases. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Gil, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Isley?
You know, when we had this conversation before, I was uncomfortable that this is an unlimited purchase and made some suggestions that maybe we change it that weren't incorporated, so my vote is no.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
No.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon Spivey?
Yes. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So all items under our initial consent agenda have been approved. Now we have items for discussion. 8.01, the Reimagined Education Advisory Committee.
Thank you. As you know, you heard me speak earlier, as the district is working towards this hybrid plan that is to be implemented during the second semester of the school year, based on COVID metrics, we have assembled, in addition to the steering committee and advisory committee. This advisory committee is consistent of various individuals, of which I will give you a breakdown. The advisory committee is designed to provide feedback and input to the steering committee. And the membership, their role is not to tell us whether we come back in person, hybrid or remote, but to help us to address those areas of concern such as equity, staff and faculty training, teaching, instruction in technology, facilities and operations, and medical data and guidance. And we've already had our first two meetings, which were October 15th and the 20th. We have our second, our third meeting on the 29th. At that time, we will present to the committee a draft of the hybrid plan and then get some additional feedback from them. We initially had a meeting scheduled for the 10th. That meeting has been changed to the 17th of November where we will actually go through the presentation that we will be bringing to the board for additional feedback. We'll meet again on the 23rd of November to look at that information and the feedback going in from the board. And then on December 1st, we'll meet again to go through the final presentation for the board. During second semester, we won't meet every week. We will then continue to meet once a month. The list of the committee members is attached. I will say that we also today will be inviting the members from the medical profession for a meeting specific to the metrics and the threshold for returning students to school and when we have to take a pause as well as screenings. The makeup of the committee consists of four, there's approximately 48 members total. There are four student representatives on our committee, four members of the, or alums, seven former parents, 12 people on the committee who are current parents to OPRF students. There's a projects manager, a strategic planner. We have representatives from D97 as well as D90. We have nine members from the medical profession as well. All of our, you can find the list of our committee members, the role that they play on our website as well as the audio recordings from the October 15th and the October 20th sessions. And are there any questions of me regarding the advisory committee?
Joylyn, why, there are quite a few people from the administration or otherwise from the district like me, for example. Why did you feel that that was important to have the members of the steering committee also on the advisory committee?
Well, so that we can relay the information from the advisory, from the steering committee and have a representative from each faction of that steering committee, the various subgroups, so that they can take the feedback back from the advisory committee. We also felt it was important to have representatives from our various bargaining units. And so there's a representative from Sec and Security, there's representatives from Buildings and Grounds, representatives from CPA, which is our support staff and secretarial employees as well. It was important to hear their aspect as well and to get feedback as it relates to training for faculty and staff as it relates to how we set up classrooms for social distancing. And if there are any questions that come up in those meetings versus having to say, you know, we'll come back with that information. We have the individuals there who can answer those questions.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions?
It's Gina. I actually had a question. I'm curious, how many parents are part of that community representative?
Or a total of 12 current parents.
And.
Seven residents who have formerly had students here as well as four people who are alums.
And what is the demographic makeup of this group? Like, do you know how many people of color are engaged?
There are approximately, I would say, maybe 50/50.
Okay. And because I see a lot of MDs, I'm thrilled that there's a lot of, um.
I will say, there are no people of color from the, well, I guess I'll say there's one person of color from the medical profession.
Yeah, I just, as you're having these conversations, I'm curious if the conversation's about impact to people who are not represented by this group that's having the conversation.
Yes, we actually have an equity work group that is focused on, and we were clear that equity has to permeate throughout. And we were deliberate in trying to recruit a diverse group of committee members.
And I noticed there's only two students. There's two students.
That two have been added since that was posted.
Oh, okay. So of course. So you have a team of, I don't know how many, this is, I didn't count it, but I'm looking at a lot. And you have four students. I just, I'm mindful of ensuring that their voices are actually heard in the space because they are quite the minority in that group.
They have been heard. In fact, they have offered some very good suggestions on how we can get additional student voice. They suggested doing public service announcements for students on their accountability and coming back to school and what that looks like. They also suggested that they do some surveys that come from them and that they reach out to their peers to see what are their fears about coming back to school? What are those things that we're doing good and what are those things that we can improve upon? And so their voice is being heard, not all, most of the students are on the equity committee. We have one who, I want to say is on facilities. But we are trying to also get more students. And we're hoping that the students who are there with what they are suggesting will be able to garner more student voice for the group. And we also have a liaison from the advisory committee to the steering committee. I forgot to indicate that.
That's really helpful to know. Thank you so much, Dr. Pruitt Adams. I also noticed that Linda Francis is listed as E-team. And I thought that she was with the Echo Partnership or, so I don't know if that's a typo or what, but I just wanted to.
I thought she was also a member of the E-team. If that is incorrect, she has not corrected us on that, but I will verify. It's not, it's not who she works for. I just thought she was a part of the E-team.
Yeah, it's okay. I just want to, I just want to be clear, like, because there's, I don't know, I'm still, I'm appreciative also that there are some folks from D97 in this conversation.
And D90 as well.
Yeah, and D90. Like, I'm appreciative that that is a collaborative effort there, so yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And I will say, Gina, just to your point about making sure that equity is part of this, in the report outs, every single group talked about it, even though there's a group specifically dedicated to equity and then there's operations and safety. And every single group actually spoke to social, emotional learning and student emotional health and equity issues. And I was, I was really impressed by that. Are there, does anyone else have questions or comments?
Sarah, I think that, I know that everybody's going to speak to it. The thing is, the people that would actually be impacted by it don't have a voice here. They're not, they're not going to actually be heard. So I just was, you know, I understand everybody's speaking to it and us making sure we have that lens. I'm just concerned about the people that it actually will impact are not actually part of this group. So how are we making sure that their, that their viewpoints are making it into the conversation as well? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification. Any comments or questions from anyone else?
I had one, I guess, I'm wondering how we're, the intersection between the steering committee and the advisory committee, I understand and have read through, but the, the size of the groups, I'm trying to understand how that process is going to work in terms of having a committee coming in at this point, given the steering committee has been working together for a while and how that addresses some of the concerns that we have heard in public comment about the steering committee not having certain representation medical as well as, I think, to the point of Gina that she just made.
Well, because we are starting late, we have a liaison from the advisory committee to the steering committee. And I recently invited another medical professional to be the liaison as well. What we've done thus far is we've reported out where we are. We've sent them all of our documents that we have. And for them to reget, we sent the documents prior to for them to review and ask questions. We allowed them to break off into work groups where they are working with individuals from the steering committee to answer the questions that we have posed, that we are struggling with. And then the questions that they have also come up with as a means of support. Since that time, there's been almost daily dialogue between myself and other members of the steering committee from people who are on the advisory committee. And as I said, we have a liaison who now sits in on the steering committee meetings.
So I just, I guess I'm thinking, I'm wondering how this is going to be expedited. It sounds as though it's increased work of the steering committee to catch up folks on the advisory committee. Work of the steering committee to catch up folks on the advisory committee. And the capacity of the advisory committee has no decision-making ability. So I'm just, in terms of time and efficiency, as well as the input that will be garnered. It's a lot of people, so I'm just wondering if the timeline that's being set out, how that's going to work without. If people are talking to people daily, that sounds like a lot.
They're corresponding with, with me daily. But we send it, we try to send them all the information in advance. For example, next week, like, they received information today, they already have. Everything that was garnered in our meeting on Tuesday from them, they have that. They have the feedback from every group, and they have another opportunity. Over the next couple of days to add any questions or suggestions or feedback that they have. Based up on just the discussion this past week. They will receive the plan in advance to look at, compare that to. The work and the information that we've done and the work that we've done with them and offer some additional feedback. As I said at the onset, it is not their role to tell us, you need to go back in a hybrid on this day. Or you need to do this, but they are giving us insight as to metrics, as to the type of screenings. We should have insight on air quality within the building. How we can structure social distancing, what we can do to bring kids in safely. The medical group discussed metrics, we're gonna have another conversation next week. They asked us questions about. The sensitivity of tests that we're looking at. And so their role is to help us determine the best way to safely. Bring our students into the building. And not so much the when we bring them in, but helping us to determine how we do that in a safe manner, how we meet. Not only the, not only academic needs of our kids, but the S E L. Needs, and so that was, as Sarah indicated, that was across the board. They've offered insight, as I said, into, maybe we should, for those rooms that. We've not been able to put the Merv filters in. What are we looking at as alternative spaces for kids? Is it a helper filter? You know, and if it's a helper filter, what other things can we do to make sure that we're meeting those needs? What are we looking at out of the box? We've had people there since that meeting send us details. And other people who can share insight with us on how to manage the air quality. So they're more of a, a group to offer feedback and resources and support and guidance. Versus making the formal recommendation. They will be a part of that, they will see the plan and provide feedback even prior to us presenting that plan to the board. So if we've missed anything, you know, it came up, we had talked about having parents opt in or opt out. And one of the feedback that came from the committee is we may want to do two, one on the front end. To see how many parents are interested in opting in and opting out, and then doing one, what's the plan is out, and parents have the opportunity to see it. As some may have changed their minds.
Sarah, I have a few comments and a question.
Yeah, of course, go for it.
So I, I, I like what I see in terms of the cross-section. It seems like we're getting expertise from some of the relevant areas. And I just wonder if. We're learning all the time about different, you know, things that might be. Just more of a factor than were previously thought, and so I don't know if. And then that's, that's what I guess this committee can be for, is to help bring our attention to that. The one thing that I just wanna note is that just the, the flow of air and just the. You know, windows being closed during the winter and so forth, that that's a real concern and. And so I don't know if it's be the infectious disease experts or who on this panel would be the ones that would be the most. In a position to really authoritatively talk about the safety and the precautions necessary to heighten the safety. Terms of flow of air with the heat and so forth.
Well, we've had. There's a person with an infectious disease background. Virology and vaccines who's actually on the facilities and operation work group. One of the good things was that the medical professionals did not all lock themselves into the medical guidance. They saw where they could have. An impact across the other working groups. And there's also an engineer who's now reached out for information and. One of the people on the team is a construction consultant. And so one of the first topics they addressed this past week was air quality. What types of filters did we have in? Could windows go up? We were, the team identified, I think, thirty-four, thirty-eight classrooms. Where the, the classrooms could not handle the new Merv thirteen filters. So what are we doing to those classrooms? Do we really need to use them? So those are the discussions that they are having. But what we've heard from the group, the biggest thing we need to focus on is. The medical threshold for bringing kids into the building. When we would have, what's the threshold for when we'd have to take an adaptive pause? And then what's the appropriate screenings and how often? Those are the things that, that we have heard kind of permeate across the group that is really the most important. For also for us to focus on.
And, and this is, you know, two months away from the last day of school before break roughly. And so I, I guess I'll mention it now, though, is the challenge, I know a lot of colleges are saying to students after Thanksgiving. Stay home, stay away for a while, because they just anticipate there being a problem. And so I, I just think there's, it's really important that if we do have a hybrid that is right out of the gate in early January. Really clear instructions to families as we head out to maybe different parts of the country, et cetera, and so. You know, the community, this is not just about what our administration or our staff can do to make this happen. This is a community-wide. Effort and anytime that, you know, and, and I've got two seniors myself and. You know, I'm not casting stones because my own windows would break in terms of some of the practices out there that teens and non-teens. Sometimes letting their guard down, but we're in a time where this is a community-wide effort, and so the more that we can just encourage and be vigilant without. You know, without shaming, but just to really emphasize that, you know, we could do all the right things, this committee could do a wonderful job, and I think it will. But we need a concerted effort across the board, and so. To whatever degree, this is just a reminder for people to know, you know, and, and whatever communication, I guess, that's the, the string I play a lot is communication. But to really emphasize how are we gonna strategically. Get that message across time and time again to all of our school body and the families, but also the entire community, because. We're only as strong as the weakest link in this chain.
You know, one of the things that, that did come out, that seemed to be a common theme that we heard. Was accountability for parents, accountability for students as well, and educating, educating them on. The protocols and things, not only that we will have in place at school. But what they need to do as well, just in their day-to-day lives in the community. There was a conversation about. Developing either videos or even having live conversations. To educate our families. And then there was also a piece about our freshmen who have never been in our building. How do we bring them in and talk about getting them in safely and getting them acclimated to a building they've not ever been in and do that in a safe manner? I will tell you, though, you know, when you have medical professionals, their opinions cover a wide range. So there are some who are, you know, maybe we don't come back till there's a vaccine. There are some who have suggested, if you want, if you can't do the screening, then you can't come to school. There are some who have said you need to test twice a week. And so our, it is our hope on the twenty-seventh to kind of come to a consensus. On what we as an institution want to do. It was something else I was gonna say to you, and it just went out of my head, that was. Important, you talked about communication. And so that was clear, too. It came up that we, people need to know why we have a hybrid and why we're bringing kids back to school, but they also need to understand. If this happens, we will have to shut down. So there's been quite a few questions that have come up from a legal nature. And so several of us had a conversation with legal counsel yesterday. How do you handle if the kid is vomiting? How do you handle if there's a disruption? What do you do if there's an emergency and you have to evacuate the building? What do you do if this, what if you do with that? And so, you know, when, you know, when people say, well, if they don't, can't take the, the screening, then they can't come to school, well, that's legally, we can't do that. Because, you know, children are entitled to a free and appropriate public education. So there's a legal aspect to it as well. That has come up in the committee and we will be reporting out the responses to that.
Thank you, and, and I would just say that, you know, I know the notion that I had of. You know, you know, I think a lot of people have is, oh, maybe we're gonna resume right away, but I think one of the possibilities may be, and correct me if this is not accurate, but. That a lot is on the table, that it could be that, yeah, we'll resume, but we're gonna wait till maybe February first. I'll just throw that as a different date.
There's a lot on the table.
Right?
And that all depends, right, when we started this, the numbers were going down. And as we've all heard over the last week, they are climbing and are climbing very quickly. And so we, we, we will have to regardless of, you know, we'll have the plan that we will have. But one of the good things I think about having the plan is if there comes a time for an adaptive pause. And we have to revert back to remote, we have a remote plan.
Yes, okay, thank you. And I know that you take very seriously the importance of saying that nothing here is. In stone and that there's, you know, things, you know, it's all conditional and situational. And, and, you know, today, I think I saw somewhere in, in the travels of, of, of social media or the media. Some mention of where Illinois is now gonna start to provide data related to school children, is that correct?
We're already getting it from the Oak Park Public Health Department, but it will be real helpful. To get the outbreaks that are going across from, because we've been told constantly by I D P H, they just, they just didn't have the bandwidth to do it. And so we were really glad to hear that.
Anyone else?
I feel like I just have to say this, I know that Matt just said it, kind of said it. But I just feel like I have to put it out there that, you know, what we know is best for students is continuity. And, and relationship building and any back and forth. Any back and forth. In building, out of building, switching schedules around, any of that, that, that lack of continuity is not a best practice, not an evidence-based practice. What we know evidence-based is that students thrive, even if it, even in this crazy system that we're having to deal with right now. That they thrive with consistency and when those relationships can be built and sustained. So I just wanted to say that.
And it is our hope that when we present the plan, you will see that.
Yeah, no, I've been really impressed with the quality of, of the conversations that I have been privy to, and certainly I'm on the equity group. And the students are awesome and had fabulous ideas, and in fact. It was one of the students in my group who really wanted to talk about accountability for students and parents, which I appreciated because it is, it's a hard. It's a hard topic to have a conversation about in any way that doesn't seem as, as Matt said, like shaming or. But it's still so important. So anyway, it's, I've been very impressed with our volunteer community members. All right, thank you, Dr. Pruitt Adams.
Thank you. The next item is the student travel. So as you know, annually, we have sent students on foreign exchange and course-like trips. For the night, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, there were six trips that had to be canceled, and that was due to. The COVID nineteen global pandemic. Those trips were China, France, Italy, Japan, Tanzania, and Yellowstone. And I forgot to say, Ms. Susan Johnson is joining me. I think, I don't know if I can't see, is she here? Okay, great. So she will help me answer some of the questions. This item is in compliance with strategic plan. Goal one and goal two, as well as board policy six colon two forty, student travel. As I said, we, there were six trips that had to be canceled. Some trips were canceled by the district, some by the sponsor, and some by the agencies. The first trip was the China trip for a total cost of, as you can see, three thousand fifteen dollars. Twenty students and over the past seven months. We have been working, a core group of us, to try to garner as much as we could of refunds for families. And so what you see is just a snapshot of the breakdown. I will say, Ms. Johnson has been diligent and. Really trying to keep track of the monies that the district had to pay back. As well as the money from the agencies. To date, I believe all district monies have been reimbursed to all the parents. And so the only outstanding refunds are from the various travel agencies. To give time for questions, I will just really hit the high points. In China, twenty students, each student paid three thousand fifteen dollars per piece. As of date, the students have been refunded two thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars each. And so there's a loss of a hundred and fifty dollars per family that was retained by that travel agency. That total group loss is three thousand. The French trip cost three thousand per student, per family. There were seventeen students. This was the one we've had the most difficulty with. So far, refund of six hundred and eight dollars per family has been recouped, and that came from vendors. The agency did file a claim on our behalf. That trip did not take off. That was during the time, this was one that the district initially said we were going to cancel. We did not put in an official written cancellation with them, and therefore the agency did file a claim on our behalf. But they have, so far, none of the claims have been honored. They filed a claim on behalf of our district and I believe twenty-one other school districts. As of date, the loss to families is two thousand four, two hundred and forty-two dollars. And that's, will be their loss should the insurance claim be denied. We were told most recently. That. It could take one to two years for this claim to be solidified. Based up on the current loss to families that comes to a total of thirty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. The Italy trip, that one, I'm gonna almost have to have Susan kind of explain. Because some students paid more or less than other students paid, but most of them paid three thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars. There were eighteen students. The money held by the district was refunded, and right now the loss to each family, which was agreed upon by those families when they settled. With the agency was one thousand dollars. So technically, this is close. However, we wanted to bring. All of the items for you tonight, so that group's total loss is eighteen thousand dollars. Am I missing anything, Ms. Johnson? With the Japan trip, it was five hundred dollars, five hundred dollars per student was collected. And there were ten students who paid for additional trip insurance at fifty-four dollars each, twenty-nine students. The families have received full refunds minus the forty-four dollars that the agency kept, so this two is closed out. Each family did lose forty-four dollars, and so the total, if it was to be refunded back, is one thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars. The Tanzania trip is, was a school course credit-related trip. And so the approximate cost of that trip, and I say approximate because it depended on the flight and different things. So the cost approximately per student was six thousand two hundred dollars. There were six students. All of our deposits have been refunded. No barriers, which is the agency has made its refunds as well. I believe this is the one where parents were given an option. Parents were given an option to take some of their funds in June, I think it would have been forty percent in June. In July, it would have been fifty percent. And then if they waited to November, it would be a hundred percent. And so the parents were given an opportunity to choose which refund they wanted, and so right now. The loss to each family is approximately six hundred and twenty-five dollars, and that was the money not refunded from rustic pathways. For the total loss for the group is ten thousand two hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents. And then there was Yellowstone, which is also. A course-related trip, and that trip cost approximately two thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars for thirteen students. All refunds and vouchers have been received by those families, so this trip too is closed. Nine families received a partial refund, resulting in a loss, loss of seven hundred and fifty. Four families chose to take the voucher so that they can use it for full payment towards another trip that does not have to be sponsored by the district. And so the loss. that does not have to be sponsored by the district. And so the loss um, varies depending on the option chose. But the total group loss right now is six thousand seven hundred and fifty. Uh, because we, I learned, we learned recently, since this item was turned in, that one of the families from the French trip did do a credit court refund. And so they were issued a thousand dollars back from the credit court company. And so the grand total versus being seventy-six thousand two hundred and two dollars and fifty cents as a loss is seventy-five thousand two hundred and two. The committee that has been working on this for the past seven months has recommended that the administration establish a committee to revamp the current approval process. That committee will consist of administration and teachers, particularly teachers who have sponsored trips in the previous time, uh, to, and the group will address those things, but not limited to an approved vendor, so that we have a core group of vendors that the district will work with. Uh, the trip requirements such as application requirements, uh, the information that is needed, so that we don't find ourselves, hopefully not in another pandemic, but in a more consistent way of which we will plan, pay for, and approve uh, the trips. Um, and then uh, it is our recommendation, and we're not asking for it today because we know this is discussion, is that at the November fifth special education uh, special board meeting, that we do a refund payment to the families not to exceed the cost of seventy-five thousand two hundred, two dollars and fifty cents. We're open for any questions.
Are there any questions from board members? All right, well, thank you. I know the administration's done a ton of work on this, um, trying to help these families secure refunds as much as we could. So I, I appreciate all of, all of those efforts.
Thank you. The next item is uh, item eight point oh three. The twenty twenty-one insurance renewal recommendations. Making this presentation is Ms. Roxanna Sanders. Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. This item is for discussion. It is in compliance with strategic plan priority four, Board Goal One, and District Policy Five, Colon Twenty. Dr. Sanders.
Thank you, Dr. Pruitt Adams. Good evening. Uh, I would like to add that I'm joined today by Jessie Ployce, who is Vice President of Employee Benefits from GCG Financial, our insurance broker. Um, as you know, how insurance plans run on a calendar basis, and each year in October, we present to the board recommendations for benefit renewals. We are using the following process to come up with renewal recommendations. First, our insurance broker works with insurance carriers to obtain competitive renewal quotes, and also with uh, Milliman Actuarial Services to present renewal projections to the District Insurance Committee. Uh, the District Insurance Committee, as you know, is comprised of representatives of different bargaining units. And this year, we also added a board member to the insurance committee. Um, the committee actually met twice this year. The first meeting was focused specifically on healthcare strategies and voluntary programs that could help us um, reduce costs for healthcare. And then the second meeting was focused on renewals. Um, this year, medical insurance through Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois is the only benefit that is up for renewal. Uh, the rest of the benefits plans are on a two-year cycle and has a twenty twenty-two renewal date. The insurance broker presented Milliman Actuarial projections of claims and expenses that are based on thirty-nine months of historical experience, adjusting for trend, population changes, and the effect of COVID nineteen on utilization and claims cost. Um, although actuarial projections for both medical and dental call for a budget decrease for twenty twenty-one, a large portion of twenty twenty claims are not credible for projection modeling due to deferred elective services because of COVID nineteen. Accordingly, the recommendation from GCG is that OPRF maintains current rates and continues conservative methodology to the medical and dental budgets. The Insurance Committee is in agreement with this approach and also recommends maintaining the current twenty twenty rates into twenty twenty-one. Additionally, as I mentioned, the Insurance Committee reviewed different uh, cost savings programs. Uh, and so the Insurance Committee recommends offering a new voluntary benefit, critical illness and accident coverage, and also implementing a number of voluntary programs that could bring savings to both the district and the employees. And I would ask Jessie to tell us a little bit more about these programs and also to present uh, some benchmarking data for the district. Jessie?
Hi, everybody. How are you?
Hi, how are you?
I'm great. So um, if we want to go maybe to this, the, Roxanne, I want to be a PowerPoint reader tonight. So Roxanna kind of went through uh, the executive summary here on our, on our budget, uh, on our medical budget, as well as Milliman's recommendations. And I know that uh, many, many folks, right, we, we get the uh, creepy crawlies when we hear about, you know, healthcare, and you know, it's complex, it's expensive to have, and it's sometimes expensive to use. And if we are using it, there's sometimes circumstances that obviously are dramatic times. But I just wanted to, just at a very high level, on, on a, on a high level, just remember that our, 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 our plan is self-funded, which means that, you know, ninety percent of our budget is, is basically rounding up a little bit. It's about eighty, eighty-eight percent. But about, so roughly ninety percent of our, our healthcare budget is to pay our, our members' claims. That's our employees and their dependents. So when people say, how do we reduce our healthcare costs when we're self-funded, you know, not, we're not insured a premium, you know, paying a fully insured premium, um, we're setting enough money in the bank to pay our members' claims. So to have the biggest impact on reducing costs, right, we always get to, well, is to reduce our claims cost. So, you know, decades ago, I'll just kind of stay focused here. So we, we are um, just kind of bringing in some, some well-vetted programs that, that national programs, as well as some regional programs that we've been working with many of our public and private sector employees for, uh, for some time. So our, our goal really is to try to bring as many um, programs uh, for our members that can improve quality um, and enhance downstream. You know, we, we have the potential as a district and our budget to save, to save money as well. So when we talk about, I, I know we presented a lot of these even at our, our original meetings, but we've, so I don't want to rehash too many of these, but about most of these programs are voluntary uh, for certain brand name medications. There's a listing of about three hundred and fifty medications that we can secure on, on a voluntary um, basis for our members. Our savings projection, because it is voluntary, uh, we don't know how many members will participate in it. I can tell you, similar sized districts of your size, it's kind of a growing process. So usually we see most success after um, a couple, you know, certain members use it and they kind of, you know, train the trainer, talk about the program, oh, did you know? Um, so we, you'll see like a range, because it's voluntary. But I can tell you, other districts of your size have saved, saved annually anywhere between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars plus. So it all depends on what medications, you know, our members are, 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 who's, who's participating and what medications they might be taking. Zero Card is a really cool concept as well. So similar to CRX where uh, we, we can save anywhere from seventy-five to eighty percent on our, on certain brand name medications with CRX. Similarly, um, we were, we're looking at for, uh, on our low deductible PPO plan um, is a Zero Card, and Zero Card is a company that does bundled payments. So um, we've done an analysis, and again, a lot of the backup is, is in the back, but those in the two PPO plans, uh, instead of having a deductible or any out-of-pocket cost, when they use certain providers through Zero Card, um, there's no out-of-pocket cost to them. Similarly, the district, by waiving their deductible and out-of-pocket cost, we still, as a district, I say we, but um, you know, will save nearly fifty percent and, or higher on covered expenses. Again, it's voluntary. People don't have to use it, but if you wanted a free MRI, here's the places. And again, it's not like a Walgreens, or it's not like Blue Cross's PPO that has almost every provider out there. Um, but we've had tremendous success um, with, again, with this program. Some really neat stories, you know, with, with members, you know, where they're like, I can't afford to have a surgery done or a certain procedure. Um, and, and this affords them the ability, one is not to have any out-of-pocket costs. And then again, on the other side is the district would be saving on average forty to sixty percent of what we would have paid through a Blue Cross, through our Blue Cross plan. Um, Roxanna said, yeah, two popular programs, we've all seen probably a million commercials on the duck, you know, the, the Aflac commercials. But two of their most popular, um, this is kind of similar to those types of programs. But the two most popular, again, all the carriers are, whether with Unum or Guardian or, or MetLife, or, you know, um, these are the two most popular, uh, are critical illness and, and an accident policy. These are employee-paid on a voluntary basis. Um, we would not be talking about these programs if the district didn't take us up on, on getting our, our district totally online. So we have been working over the last several months to get it to an online instead of a paper. Uh, you know, where, where Roxanne and her team are working on applications and paper communications to know we have a, a true benefit administration portal. So employees can log on and their spouses can log on at any time and see the benefits available to them, right? We, and, and uh, so a program like this is uh, they're successful when members can, can see what's available to them and, and it's laid out there as well. Some low-lying fruit that we looked at, again, we, we really started jumping in, in, in July um, and, and taking on the technology side with our teams, but we also started again looking at some low-lying fruit uh, on, on your pharmacy, on, on your, you know, you're currently using uh, Prime Pharmaceutical, which is, you know, on the back of the ID card, so Blue Cross handles the medical and, and Prime is our pharmacy benefit manager. I think there's work for us to do into the future, but some low-lying fruit, when we started really looking at what your programs were. One was Member Pay the Difference, and, and as well as looking at non-FDA and exclusions list. Um, because many like proton pump inhibitors can be achieved now over the counter, where in the past you needed, you know, a prescription for Pepsid or Prevacid or uh, you know, uh, Protonix. These are heartburn medications that at one time were very expensive, and they still are very expensive on a brand name basis, but now have even become over the counter. So we looked at, you know, members paying the difference when their doctor or physician allows them to substitute a medication and they still want the brand name. That, that's okay. They can get the brand name medication, but they'll pay the difference in cost between the brand name medication and its generic equivalent. So again, those types of programs just encourage people to say, oh, I could be taking Atorvastatin versus Lipitor, you know, and uh, I can still get the, the brand name Lipitor, but I'll be paying the difference in the cost between the generic equivalent, the Atorvastatin and the Lipitor, for example. The other, other programs are, 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 I'm kind of a geek on this stuff, but, but are awesome, really, really cool uh, programs. Um, I'm, I'm happy that the committee and, and OPRF followed our recommendation to move so quickly on these programs. Um, Levango, I can tell you, we just had a number of success stories on, on both Levango and Hinge Health. Um, I was at a SHRM conference several years ago, and, and these programs, again, Blue Cross signed a master contract with, for, for preferred pricing for its, um, for its clients. However, um, these, these programs have been well-established through large self-funded uh, national employers for many years. And, and Levango, for example, is a, is, is a program that um, assists members with hypertension or diabetes um, for uh, additional care, additional services, additional coaching. Um, you know, members are, are contacted. It's, it's voluntary for them to opt in. There's been some real success stories on there as well. I had one client, as an example, say, wait, we, we can offer our members a concierge and better type programs, you know, we don't want our members to have heart attacks or strokes with hypertension and diabetes, you know, is, is, is so, so difficult. That they said, we, we'd have this program even if we didn't save money, because we want, you know, healthier employees and, and get them the care that they need. And oh, by the way, downstream, our plans will actually save money, because people are, 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 are taking, you know, they're giving the tools to better control um, their hypertension and diabetes care needs. Um, the last is Hinge Health, Musculoskeletal Care. Um, it's digitizing. Hinge Health is just, again, uh, digitizing and proactively being there for members that su- suffer through pain management type things. Our, our goal is to really uh, treat the, treat the members where they're at versus getting multiple MRIs, not following, you know, getting to in-person ATI or Athletico, those types of programs. Again, um, I think even in the back was, was the latest, I had a, a member from a large municipal client. Most recently, I don't know if it's still in, I think it's in the back, but applauding the city for implementing the program and, and was cognizant as well, that, you know, a program like this, I'm sure is saving the city a lot of money and that, how, how happy she was uh, through the coaching. The neat thing about like Musculoskeletal Care as well, is many times, you know, as people are going, they're, they're really coaching throughout the entire episode, you know, so when people might have a, a knee, knee pain and going through, you know, exercises there, that they might have an obesity-type issue or depression. Um, and, and Hinge Health is trying to treat those other co, co, um, you know, factors within a person as they're dealing through their MSK scare, MSK care, Musculoskeletal Care. And again, oh, by the way, um, the return on investment for, on our side is for every dollar we spend, on average, we'll save three dollars per member that participates. So those are some pretty neat programs that, again, we're trying to create win-win opportunities for our membership, that they'll look at the district and the board and say, wow, these are, they're carrying, you know, these are just rounding out our benefits um, and not, you know, looking for cost initiatives of cost shifting. Um, that, I think those are, you know, discussions for the future of, of, of future established plan designs, you know, deductible changes going from a, you know, a five hundred dollar deductible to a higher one, right? That's cost shifting. Um, which I, I, I recommend that the district position its benefits where you want them to be. Um, but we're trying to, again, as your advisors, you know, typical broker can always, you know, raise a deductible or a copayment, that's easy. But we're trying to be your, your strategic advisors and really looking at cost of care and creating win-win opportunities for our membership and creating a sustainable plan for the, the district and, and the constituents. So that, hopefully I was kind of succinct on some of that. Um, next slide kind of goes into, oh, a long appendix. So uh, you can just slide through these. These are, these are some of the, the analysis that were done. Um, you know, just in trying to see, would, would these programs be a good fit for our district and our members? So as you maybe reflect back on this, you'll see we didn't have, you know, a lot of impact savings on Member Pay the Difference, but we know that there were six people taking a brand name medication where there's a generic equivalent available. Um, what it also does is it puts, it puts in protections for members into the future, right? Or, you know, the next new hire is taking a medication, or I'm, I'm, I'm not taking any medications now, but six months from now, my doctor prescribes to me a new medication, and I have the choice to take the generic or the, or the brand name when, when, when my physician says I can take either. So again, it's playing defense as well for future, for future care. We kind of scroll through this a little bit. I'll, like, I'll just stop. Again, this is some of the drug excuse, exclusion list. Compounds, you know, these are blocking and tackling that we've done with plans several years ago. Uh, compounds are not even approved by the FDA, but our plan is covering them. Um, you know, you know, the proton pump inhibitors, you know, they, those are over the counter, but we're still covering brand name. There's, there's no reason. So these are just some, of, of some of the, the low-lying fruit that, that healthcare plans um, have, have put in several years ago. Um, and these programs all, by the way, are, are part of your HMO. They were not part of your PPO. So um, your HMOs have these for several years, ser- all, for several years now. I mean, since you've had an HMO, um, both the Member Pay the Difference, as well as this exclusion list, were all part of your HMO membership, but were not included in your PPO. Um, as we kind of scroll through some things, um, this is a little bit more on the Levango. And um, Roxanna can forward you out if you're really interested. You can, there's, there's some really great videos. If you want to keep scrolling through. Um, this isn't anything more than I, um, these are the costs that we pay, you know, for people that do participate. This was, this is that email on Hinge Health, you know, it was, it was great. It's real life. It's, it was there in front of, of us and made us feel real glad that that, that city client had implemented it with us. Um, these are examples of accident insurance. Again, I participate at a JCG Alaro, we we have it and of course, had a boat lift fall on my leg and I had my son get you know, concussed in 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 the hockey check last season and and those are types of, you know, coverage where you submit your claims, right? I have my deductible and co-insurance or co-payments and uh, I'm getting money back to help me afford my out-of-pocket expenses. Long-term with these plans also uh, foster is is people when you have multiple plan designs, like many people have higher and higher deductibles, you know, our our plans are are pretty rich um, from the from out-of-pocket standpoint of view, but it also allows uh, organizations when they do introduce higher deductible or out-of-pocket, you know, plans that do have lower premiums. That members are are purchasing almost like gap insurance. So, well, I don't use it all too much versus a couple of generic medications and my, you know, annual physical. But if I do have an accident, now I have protection um, through accident. And if you scroll to the next slide. Is um, is almost like, this is like your critical illness. So the premiums, MetLife has has been a good partner, they really simplified, in fact, I I I use the template of of the the plan offerings that they're they're doing with OPRF to a few other clients because it's just really simple. Um, our members, you know, can, we pay for it as it as as an employee, I'm I'm an eligible employee. But, you know, if I have a heart attack, if I if I, you know, come down with cancers or those types of benefits. Um, you know, I I'm paid a lump sum fee because I'm going to have deductible even medical claims and out-of-pocket costs, but even stuff that um, family costs, babysitters, I might need rides to get to the, you know, for care, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it really rounds out your your benefits and and strategically as we 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 look into the future as well. I think some of the last slides in here, there were some, some benchmarking. Um, again, I think this is just to be taken as as a broad brush of where your plan designs for your PPO are relative to other organizations um, throughout Illinois, you'll see that there's almost eight hundred surveys. Um, our Milliman survey targets employers that have a hundred to five thousand employees. Um, these are all in, um, because actuaries don't like to use averages and I'm not going to even play an actuary, I'm too funny. I'm kidding if anybody know. Um, but, you know, these benchmarks are all in the median, so you'll see there's what, four hundred and forty-ish, you know, educational schools have participated in this. Um, and we just cut, this is out regionally, but most of our school districts, right? Like whether it be Yorkville, they want to do comparables to other districts in their area out in the southwest side or you know, if it's Arlington Heights, they want to see what's in their area. So a lot of times districts are getting more, um, you know, scrolling down into seeing whatever other comparable districts, but this is just a broad brush of where your plans line up to those others. So this was done on both a PPO as well as 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 your HMO plans. Both in terms of plan design on top and then your the cost uh, below both in premiums and our uh, employee uh, subsidies and contributions. But a lot of times it just allows us to say where where are our benefits positioned and and where do we want them positioned? And again, um, I I would be certain that OPRF, like many districts, you know, get more uh, granular and looking at other districts that you want to benchmark against. That's a lot. In a short time, but hopefully that gives you a flavor of what what we're trying to accomplish and working with with your district. And um, like I said, there's a we're trying to look at really on the on the biggest part of our our district cost is the claims pie. You know, that's where um, the biggest impact we can have. Together.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Tom, I'm sure you have some questions or comments?
Yes, I have.
If you want to kick it off?
I have a number of questions and so you're going to decide how to throttle me. I have about a half a dozen. So I'm 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 going to start with couple of questions, really more for internal for the administration, so we understand the financial impact. So um, my question is, what was the guidance provided by, to the committee? For financial ex, but you know, for expectations when, you know, uh, what was, what was provided to the committee in terms of where we wanted to end up?
It was uh, provided to the committee that uh, this year we have no increase in costs. We did ask the committee to look at uh, some plan alternatives at decreasing deductible, uh, I I mean, increasing deductibles for employees. Uh, the committee was against it this year, given the COVID situation. Uh, they didn't want it for employees to experience additional hardship. But we agreed that we will review that in the future years.
And and just to clarify, um, because there's reference to both last year and and budget, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. The recommendation here, if am I correct in understanding that the recommendation is that the costs will be equal to last year? But that the budget had an increase in costs, or am I misunderstanding?
Um, yes, there was an increase in the cost to budget. That is also because we um, take some consideration into the fact that some people may also change their plans uh, when it's time for open enrollment. The other is too, when we look at the budget, um, that the budget that we present is usually one that says benefits and then benefits, it includes TRS, IMRF and um, 403B.
In addition, uh, as I mentioned at the very beginning of the presentation, our insurance run on calendar year. The budget, as you know, is on fiscal year, which is school year.
Exactly.
And so these recommendations are specifically for medical benefit. There is no increase, that's the only benefit that is up for renewal this year, there is no increase to medical benefit.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I've got some data questions and and I think I want um, to get Jesse's perspective on this if I could, um, you know, in looking at the the benchmark, or I'm sorry, at the districts, the the district's historical data as well as the benchmark, some of the data, here's what I've found, which is um, one, the the, from two thousand and five to two thousand and twenty, which is a fifteen-year span. Just picking our PPO um, family plan, which is the largest one. Our costs have increased. Um, our costs today are twenty percent above what the the bench, different benchmarks you show. So that's one data point. And the second one is over that period of time, our costs have increased at a rate of three point oh percent, three point oh five percent per year over that period. So I guess my question, Jesse, is how does that three percent compare to what the rest of the world is seeing over in a longer period of time?
It's great. Um, no, I, yeah, I can send you a a large Milliman, Milliman is kind of the granddaddy of all actuaries. Um, and again, not getting too boring and geeky, but uh, healthcare inflation has is the lowest it's been, like in the last couple of years now, the last two years. Uh, medical, just on the medical side is anywhere from three to four percent with pharmacy pushing seven to sometimes ten percent. So um, we're gauging most, to be the median. Median, again, when you, if you're even going to refer back to those benchmarks, I warn you, those are the median. So that means half, half of all other organizations are better and half are worse, that's the median. So, but I'll tell you, as far as the median increases, we we're we're usually looking at six, six and a half, and that's compounding. As you said, so three percent compounded, um, you know, healthcare, it's it's no, no secret how expensive healthcare is and why um, it's such a big.
So if we're ki- I'm just trying to get the big picture. So if we're compounding at a significantly lower rate, yet we're still twenty percent above um, the median. That tells me we were way above the median or, I mean, we we're growing at a slower rate, but we're still above si- you know, above the median, so.
Doesn't, I'm trying to understand it, it doesn't make sense to me in totality. Um, well, your deductible is, is fifty percent less, your out-of-pocket is a fraction of what the other medians are. Uh, you have to look at it as totality. I've had two neighboring districts and they've they talked to one or they're like, why are our hike, our costs so much higher than your district? And what did we talk about? Your, it's one district, so your district, ninety percent of your cost is coming in claims. So one district, or it doesn't matter if you've been in school, but I I can tell you in the school conversations, you could have a school across the street that has rates that are seventy-five percent less or or forty percent more. Um, when when you're looking at a self-funded or even, you know, fully insured health plans, the carrier's always going to win, right? If you're a bad risk of a group, they're eventually going to raise your premiums because no carrier wants to lose money. So very similar to yours, your your plan, you, if your claims costs are higher, your plan costs are higher.
Um, going to the the presentation, there's a lot of voluntary benefits and and it's, well, first of all, thank you for the um, the benchmark data, we've we've asked for that and it's great to to see the work product that's been put forth. Likewise, the work on the voluntary benefits. I, my question is as voluntary and and with the situation which you described, which is we have a very low out-of-pocket, so that the majority of the cost, you know, is is borne by the district. How do you get adoption of those programs?
Through education of, i- it's really, uh, as Jesse explained, we were the goal of the programs is to be win-win for the district and for the employee. So each of these programs has potential benefits to the employees and the only way they would be sold on getting onto these programs was, is through education. So we're planning um, education campaign as part of our open enrollment process.
As well as, and I just add to that, Roxanna, as as well as they afford you to make plan, plan modifications to incent members to have a a stronger financial incentive to look at them as well. If you have a five-dollar brand name copayment for a medication, which you don't. But if you did, from go from zero to five dollars is not really going to wow me to save money to look at any alternatives, right? If you have a hundred dollar a month brand name copayment and I can get one at no cost, and again, you don't have a hundred either. Um, here's our, our, you can, um, you know, in in between there. So a lot of times as as plan designs, again, can help steer people towards looking at alternatives as well.
I'll, I'll yield the floor, Sarah.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, questions from anyone else? Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Dr. Moore.
Sorry, Jesse. Um, I, I, it goes to um, what, the things that you were talking about in terms of the um, incentives and uh, as well, the, the plans that we have now, and I know in the last um, our contracts, uh, we did put some things in that were uh, thought of as incentives in terms of our HMO. Um, being at zero, which I, you know, looking at the chart, that doesn't seem to be, you know, the norm. And um, is there a way to have more information on um, how we educate employees um, about being overinsured? When there's not that uh, need. And I say that as someone who would be taking the highest thing because of uh, health reasons, but um, the way our plans, the the differences in price of the deductibles doesn't really lend itself to incentives. So what, what other ways are there to do that?
Well, Dr. Moore, you kind of hit it on the head and and this is probably not the forum for me to to speak to it, but again, even when people are looking at the premium differential between some of the plans offered. You, you know, when um, I don't have your contributions right in front of me, uh, but you know, there's not a strong it's, we actually are launching, let me answer your question first, as one is you have to have some financial tools and and differential, I don't think, based on how your contracts are written right now with the employee cost, there's not that strong of an incentives, right? People if they think one plan is better, whether, as you're kind of saying, whether they're buying the, you know, think it's the best, the gold platinum plan, or they could have this and and you know, not on, you know, they don't use the insurance, as you said, they're almost overinsured. But for the premium differential with how your plans were set up currently, might not, you know, I, most of your people would rather go overinsured because there's not that much of being underinsured on the, you know, on the other side of it. So but to help with the education, we're launching a number of pieces and I, and again, I applaud Roxanna's team for and and Cindy and and you guys for selecting us, but we're actually, um, you know, Employee Navigator, our Ben Admin system that you've implemented as well, just so people um, can refer back to their benefits throughout the year, right? They spend twenty minutes at open enrollment, if that, selecting healthcare plans. But we shop two hours for eyeglasses that look right on our face or or for, you know, for shoes that, you know, might be, you know, here or there, but um, it it's really trying to meet the the members throughout the year, it's not just a one-time open enrollment. Roxanna and and Cindy uh, as well, when when we were working with them, as we're looking at adding an artificial intelligence, almost um, uh, a type of program for members, it's I would say it's kind of child, I, I don't know, it's Roxanne, you can explain Jelly Vision better, but it's an emoji, it's it's uh, interactive um, type enrollment process, you know, that will walk through people's, explain what an HMO is and and kind of in a fun, a fun way to help people um, select plans. And then lastly, there's more of a, an actuary, Jelly Vision's a fun way for members um, to to look at their plans and educate themselves on it. Um, because again, we have veterans, you know, I don't know, you know, I'm just saying, more experienced people on our plan that have did it, done it, been on HMOs, we've been on HSAs, we've been on PPOs. But then we have twenty-seven-year-olds that are coming off their parents' plan for the first time and have problems spelling HMO. You're like, and you're like, well, I'll just get the best. I, you know, my parents said, just buy the best for now. Um, so again, we we'll bring everybody along. It's, it's hard to do it all in one, one fell swoop, it's a multi-year process and we just do the best, every organization, private, public. Um, but these are tools that can can only help us.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Jesse, for your time.
My pleasure. Goodbye, everybody.
Have a good night.
The next item is Imagine Project Two Funding. Uh, making this presentation is Miss Cindy Sador, Chief Financial Officer.
Um, can I, I'm sorry, can I stop you for one quick second? Does anybody need to take a break? We've been going from close to three hours and this might be a longer item. Or do people want to just keep going? Five minutes?
Yeah, if we can do like four or five.
Yeah, can we come back at ten fif- nine fifteen? I'm sorry, Dr. Poot Adams, I meant to stop you before I started you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks. If folks could um, as they return, turn their cameras on, just so that I know that they're here and um we can get started, that'd be great.
Hey, Sarah, Gina, I'm here.
Thank you.
Jackie's here too.
Thanks. Okay, I think we're all here. Um, Gail, are you here?
Yes, thank you. And I think Mr. Martiuri is going to be joining us.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry to have interrupted you, Dr. Pruitt-Adams.
Oh, that's okay. Uh, the next item is the Imagine Project Two funding options. And this item is being, it's an item for discussion. It is being presented by Miss Cindy Sador, Chief Financial Officer. Um, the board requested that that the district present, I'll go back to when the board approved the Imagine Plan, it was presented to the board that we would come forward with a a funding plan for Imagine. And so we are bringing today funding options for Project Two of the Imagine Plan. Imagine Plan, this presentation addresses components of Project Two for board consideration, how funds will be generated and options for consideration that will be pertinent to funding this project. With COVID nineteen, school districts have been concerned with future revenue sources and the impact this may have on their future fund balances. Uh, this, as I said, this item is for discussion at this time. And we're presenting just funding options and not formally making a recommendation. This item is in compliance with strategic plan priority four. Miss Sador. You're muted. You are muted.
Yep, got it. Got it. Thank you. Um, thank you, Dr. Pruitt-Adams. So um we went through, we went through, can you put in the next slide, please? And we wanted to do an overview uh to see exactly what is in Project Two. And what we could see the component is, it's the Southeast Physical Education Edition. Uh, with that will be the Field House Extension and flooring and mechanical upgrades are recommended for it. When uh the cost was estimated back in two thousand eighteen, it caused the estimated cost at that point was sixty-five point four million dollars. Next slide, please. What we wanted to do with this done too is take a look and see what some of the details and objectives, what was the objective of Project Two? Project Two is to replace a ninety-year-old physical education facility, uh, free up some space for the performing arts uh facilities, uh, which will be, which would be done and completed in Project Three, and then create some space for the future uh two-hundred-meter indoor track. The elements or components, there are actually nine of them. There's nine components and on that, there is a um, number one is locker room changing facilities for stu- uh for all students. Number two is a mul- uh mul- multi-purpose gymnasium space. Number three is an athletic and PE offices. Number four is multi-purpose dance gymnasium. Five is improvements to performing arts theater green room. Number six is one-twenty-five-by-forty-yard swimming pool. Number seven is an ADA compliant elevator. Number eight is the new athletic trainers room, and number nine is a weight room. Next slide, please. So um what we what we needed to do is we were saying, you know, how much fund balance should the district maintain throughout the first three project sequences? And some of the issues is to consider is how would the following potential board um decisions affect our uh future revenue imbalance? Some would be the decisions of the tax levy growth. The other would be uh levying full amount to CPI, uh, reducing uh and then reducing the annual levy by abating a set dollar amount and and then, of course, the uh collective bargaining agreements. Uh, should additional funds and reserves be maintained for potential unforeseen cost, including pro- a possible property tax freeze, reduction in uh evidence-based funding, a pension shift cost to the districts, and uh con- uh continued expenses due to COVID nineteen? Next slide, please. So another key question too would be, uh, how might the district generate uh some funds to make up differences among the actual project cost, annual capital improvements budget, which is the ten-year uh maintenance plan, and also to uh total fund balance? Um, some would be relocate uh uh re- allocate uh dollars from annual capital improvement budget and then issue bonds. The other would be uh receive support from outside funding sources, such as the Imagine Foundation Campaign and uh parent group donations. Next, please. We looked at the five-year projection and in the five-year projection, this i- is we started to build it, we looked at, you know, uh, the ten-year maintenance plan, Project One and Project Two. This, we started looking at Project Two being um the drawings and design work being started in twenty-four, twenty-five, which would leave us with about a forty-eight percent fund balance at that point. The district policy at this current point is between twenty-five and seventy-five percent. And this again is only the three, three million being spent in this year. Um, in this, we have the twenty million sitting in reserve at this point in time for the capital project. Next slide, please. This is, this is, can you go up just a little bit more on this slide, please? Thank you. So this is a slide that actually shows that over the course of uh since two thousand thirteen to two thousand eighteen tax years, the district has provided tax property relief um by collecting forty-six million less than it was permitted to collect under the state cap uh tax cap law. So in this, you could see that the dark line is actually what the school would have been um permitted. And then it it's actually the lines below show what this uh district actually had uh collected. Next slide, please. So then we looked at just creating some options and this is uh thank you. Okay, so uh so option one is to actually delay the project. Um, this allows for some of the uncertainty that we're not sure where we're going to land with some of our funding and our revenues. Um, with COVID, we're not sure what we're going to actually be seeing in revenues as far as property tax collection, corporate personal property replacement tax, if uh we'll be receiving less of that, and possible reduction of the uh evidence-based funding. Expenditures, we don't know how much more we'll have of the continued expenditures for from COVID nineteen, the ten-year maintenance plan, because we have the shift of the cost coming up forward and then lowering it, even though it'll be, it would be after ten years, it would either be forty, fifty, or sixty million, depending on what option uh is picked, but during that, that would be still the uh majority of the cost is going to be upfront. And then the possibility of a pension cost shift to districts. Um, just to make a note that uh if Project Two is delayed, the district could potentially, potentially uh re-allocate twenty million in restricted capital funds to the ten-year maintenance plan. That's because the twenty million is sitting in a restricted account capital and it can only be spent on the capital projects. So if we were going to delay, it would make sense to actually spend some of that money on some of the ten-year maintenance plans that we're doing. Next slide, please. Option two is to begin the design work in twenty-four, twenty-five, as we showed in the uh five-year projection. This would include leaving the, using the twenty million currently in the restricted capital funds uh and then doing a a referendum approved debt, which allows the community to uh vote on the project. Um, in this option, though, the fund balance could be reduced to the level requiring a separate operating fund at this point, referendum at this point, uh possibly in the year twenty-twenty-five, depending on the ten-year maintenance plan. Next slide, please. Uh, number, uh, this is actually should be funding option number three. There was a mistake with number two. And then uh, this one here again is uh doing twenty-four, twenty-five without seeking a referendum, that would be using the twenty million. Um, it will require donations from the Imagine Foundation Capital Campaign before construction began. And that includes debt certificates, which um does not require a referendum and it would not increase property tax as repayment comes from a fund balance, but the district must guarantee that this fund balance um is going to be paid for the principal and uh interest, but it has to come from either like Fund Twenty, one of the non-restricted accounts. In this option two, you have the fund balance that could reduce the level requiring a separate operating referendum in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. Next slide, please. So in summary, at this point, um, these are three options for the board to consider. At this time, administration, as Dr. Pruitt-Adams had said, is not making a formal recommendation for funding Project Two. And the uh administration will bring an update to the board approximately six months. We're hoping at that point in time, we'll know a little bit more, uh, have stability of what's actually going to be happening with revenues. And at this point, I open it up for the many questions.
Thank you. Um, who wants to go first with questions? Tom, did you raise your hand? I have to assume somebody has questions.
Oh, I'll, I have questions. I didn't raise my hand, but I seem to be always in front of the
Sorry.
Alright, so no problem. So so he- here are my questions and I'm going to go kind of rapid fire. The first option, and I'm trying to kind of sort these out. Well, the first option says delay, but is there any guy, you know, delay by a a year, delay by a century? Is there any anything? Any more specificity of what that means?
Um, what that means, Tom, is once we know a little bit more about or more about our funding and our revenues, then we'll be able to say what our recommendation is. But at this point in time, especially with COVID, we don't know what the expended expenditures are going to be. Plus, we really don't know at this point in time, what does social distancing mean in a project that we're also looking at building?
So it's kind of, if I'm hearing that correctly, delay until we get some stability from the COVID um pandemic.
Revenues.
Pardon? Okay.
From the, for the revenue. So if we know more about where our revenues would be, if we have more stability to that and we know that evidence base isn't going to be reduced, we're not going to get a pension shift. Uh, property tax, where we, there won't be a reduction in it, we'll still be receiving what we're going to receive. Um, but then, yes, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Well, but but I mean, I I you started, I I started with with COVID, but the minute you started then throwing in, I mean, because pension shift has been a topic of discussion for the seven years I've been on the board um and many of the others. So I I guess I'm going to ask for, you know, if it's to answer all of those things, or is it to delay for kind of clarification on COVID, I guess?
It's, it's going to be a clarification uh on COVID, but it is also something that we have heard that if the progressive tax does not pass, that the pension shifts will come along. Also, two with the state, the the state that the uh state is actually in as far as revenues go, we also need to see how much borrowing the state's going to have to do. We're, we're a tier four. So it's something to see for next year. Where exactly will we be with that? Will they be able to borrow again next year or will they have to? And if if we will still be receiving our evidence-based funding.
Okay. Um, my next question i- is, and I'll ask this and one more and then yield the floor, which is um, we, i- is, this is about phase two. In phase one, we've made a decision to this juncture to def- to defer, um, I guess, certain components, the additional classrooms, et cetera. Not all of phase one has been executed. So where does that uh activity that is the undone phase one work fit in all of what was shared?
Um, that is, that is not part of this. This was part, this was the uh Project Two, if I'm not mistaken, from when uh it was originally shown as Project One through Project Five. Uh, those would have to be considered in um Component Two, if that was also a Project Two, if that was also going to be in there about the additional classrooms. And I can't remember what else there was in that.
Additional classrooms, I think elevator and something else.
And also Cindy, the classrooms are alternate, so they're not deferred yet. It depends on what the actual bids come back that's going out next month. When the bids come back, we will be able to add more or, or they will be deferred. But we won't know that until after the bids come in, because they can be long, we can add more to, we can add more to versus inferno.
And our intent tonight was, uh, we were initially supposed to come in May with a presentation on how we would fund project two. And that was based upon when we first asked the board to try just to come back with a funding plan. In May, instead of coming forward project two, we were still talking about how to fund project one. And so we wanted to come back because, you know, if project two is, is supposed to happen, even with a year delay, we, we have to start thinking about that now, particularly in these times when we're not sure what our funding stream will be.
And, and my, my third question, and then I'll yield this. It, in option two, I believe it was that you presented, um, the one that had the, the, the refer, the capital referendum, right? So it, it looked like there would be two referendums and pretty much on top of each other. Is that correct in terms of timing?
Yes, that could, that, that could possibly be. If project two is delayed, the district could potentially, um, so in the second one, sorry, in that one, it was saying that there could be a separate operating referendum that needs to happen in 2025.
In addition to the cap, in addition to the capital referendum, in what approximate timeframe?
Um, so the referendum, you would want to, you would want to probably do the referendum for project two. You would want to get that passed because you're going to need the funds. So I would say you would need that passed by, by the time it was 24.
Okay.
Saying starting 25, yep.
That would be a referendum in 24 and then a referendum in 25. Okay. I yield.
Yep.
Thanks, Tom. Who else?
I'll go ahead if, uh, so, you know, Tom posed some really good questions. That was also on my mind. And some of the whole issues of, well, the sequencing. I mean, I see where there's a talk of for project two includes doing something with the track to anticipate project five. And I guess at what point as an administrative team and whoever else that, you know, from the whole imagine group, might it be who has to reassess and consider, you know, just scaling back this at some point? If it, if it needs that, first of all, because I don't want to have this board, any future boards be operating under, you know, feeling like we have to run out the ground ball to use the, you know, to use a basic metaphor. If already we realize that's going to lead to an out, that this is not realistic based on the landscape that has shifted. And so I just think it's important for us to acknowledge that the world is very different than it was seven months ago and certainly three years ago when the imagine group first met. And so, um, yeah, I guess, so in that one line kind of brought it out in pretty vivid detail. And so I guess it's more of a philosophical question and it, I'm not even looking for an answer right now unless there's some insight that Dr. Pruitt Adams or Cindy wants to offer, but I just feel like at a certain point, when we don't even know the impact of all that's happening right now and has been happening in the fallout from that. You know, there's a major pause button, I think. And for us to even have moved on with project one, I mean, that's going to be interesting long-term with Monday morning quarterbacking. I mean, I, I was part of the decision to move forward with it, but even that was a stretch for, for some observers. And so I just want to, it's mostly a rhetorical question, I think, but if anyone else feels, you know, compelled or moved to share, I would appreciate that.
I don't think we have an accurate response in terms of a year or so forth to win. But for us, it has to be a continual review of our finances, how taxes are paid and so forth. Cause like, as you said, we can't predict. The board will receive in this weekend's end of week notes, a statement from the Imagine Foundation. Cause they too are, you know, they have a lot to take into consideration because that is part of this funding model. So it has to be an ongoing recalibration. And so we, we start now and we just have to continuously review.
Yeah. And so, thank you. I mean, I just want to make clear, nothing I'm saying is a criticism. It's just me talking about the big elephant that's crowding out the whole room. So, thank you.
Another reason for bringing it forth now is, you know, why wait until two years from now? And then come and say, oh, guess what? And so we have to start the process of constantly recalibrating.
Thank you.
And this is Marty. I'm just going to weigh in that I support that viewpoint, Dr. Pruitt Adams, that this is the right way to approach it. So I want to applaud the administration for getting ahead of these kinds of issues. And to what Matt was saying, and, and it really incorporates some of what Tom said. My thinking when I went through these materials was we need to have a thorough review of priorities in this program after we have a much better handle on the impact of COVID-19 and how we're going to get through that. So I was thinking maybe, and with community input, particularly the, some of the same individuals that were involved in the development of this, because we have a lot of new information now and, and not just new information because of COVID and because of our tax situation. But we've actually, you know, had shovel to dirt on project one. And we discovered certain things about the infrastructure of the building, what could accommodate, some costs that weren't anticipated that we now know. And we have some architectural information that we didn't have before. So I think reprioritizing in context of all this new information with community input makes a lot of sense. And a major pause button to, to echo Matt is in order. And, and possibly this summer, we could convene maybe a working group around this with the community to talk about, here's now what we know about COVID. Here's now what we know about the architectural infrastructure of our building that we didn't know before. Here's what we know about the cost. Here's what we know about our capital needs for the next 10 years. So now let's look at what was in the project two, project three, project four, what's left to do under project one and come up with some new priorities or maybe some rejiggering and maybe eliminate some steps. But that's the kind of review I think we need to do, but I don't think we could do it yet.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll, I'll weigh in here. I'm also very much in line with what Matt and Ralph just said, that given the level of unknowns that we really, that, that, that there's an important step to rethink the scope of what we're doing and the pace of what, what it might happen in the future. I guess a question, before I move on, a question for Cindy. You know, in, in looking at this and understanding where we are, any project that's going to address, you know, the sort of athletic, that this chunk of work, these urgent things that we identified, can you imagine any situation where that would not require a referendum?
The only thing I could think of is where you meet some of the work, like when we're doing the tenure project or are you talking about project?
If we're going to do a ma- this major piece of work, which is now, you know, 65 to seven, you know, if you add in the things that we delayed, we're talking about a $70 million piece of work in terms of needs. And most of these needs were urgent projects, which we identified or said that things that had to be done. Is there, is there any, I, I can't see any way that those things would be accomplished without a referendum.
At this point, I would say no, I don't, I don't see another way of, of actually doing that because I think that there are, we have one that's especially a high need.
Yeah. And I, and I guess if, if that's the case, then delay or not delay or what we do, I believe that whatever planning we do for this next chunk of work really needs to incorporate the fact that we will need a referendum. Either because operating costs will align with project costs, but that's just fundamental. That I, and I think we could, that would just try to simplify our world and say, all these other options about delay or whatever that, yes, all those things exist. Ultimately, we have a project which requires a referendum and, and we ought to, you know, we ought to plan around that.
Gina or Jackie?
I would, I would concur with what everybody says, also said. I, um, we have no idea about anything right now. Like quite honestly, like we don't know what the next year even holds. Like it's the financial picture for the state, all of the things that have already been said. So there's a, there's a real need for us to have a whole lot more information before we start really moving into these discussions. Plus, I'm reminded of when we started having our discussions about phase one and how we, um, how there was information, like how, how many times we had to go back to make sure we had clear and accurate information. So I just want to make sure that, you know, as we're, as we're, as we even begin considering anything like this down the road, that the referendum piece absolutely needs to be clear that that's, that that would be a, a given. But also that we have all this, all, all of the information that we need to be able to look at it. And I personally don't feel like we're going to have any kind of, any level of certainty around what we're really looking at for at least another year. And that's just my personal opinion, but thanks.
Thank you. Jackie, did you want to weigh in?
I concur with what's been said, so no additional comment.
Thanks. I do have just a couple of questions. So you're going to come back in six months with an update? Or do you anticipate asking us for any sort of decision at that point or is that information?
Only at that, at that point, that would be probably information only because right now I, I don't have anything. If I have something, we'll probably, you know, as a, as an administration, sit down and decide what exactly we can bring forward at that time, if, if, if things change. I mean, and it would almost have to be a drastic change in where we're sitting in the world today.
All right. Well, thank you very much. If nobody else has any other questions, I think we can move on to our next item. Thank you, Ms. Thor.
The next item is the racial equity procedure implementation. And this item two, hold on a minute, click on it, I guess. This item is also for discussion. Making the presentation is Dr. LeVar Ammons. And he is going to give the board an update on how the racial equity procedures will be implemented. This is in compliance with strategic plan priority one and district policy seven colon 12. Dr. Ammons?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pruitt Adams, and good evening, everyone. Chris, do you have the, the presentation or am I just going to share my screen and drive it?
Um, it's your preference, whatever you'd like.
Uh, we can go ahead and put it up.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. So tonight we'll, we'll talk a little bit about, or a lot of it about the implementation process and update for the racial equity policy, specifically the procedures. Next slide, please. I'm very excited to, to be to this point as we are, you know, we have a, quite a bit of work ahead of us with the implementation of all 12 of these components. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is just to provide an update on where we are as far as the status of the implementation of the procedures themselves. And of course, to open the floor for any questions for, for the board that, that you may have. Next slide, please. So then as we, as we look at the, the policy and the procedures themselves and understanding that we have, you know, 12 sections, as I mentioned before, there is quite a bit of work ahead of us on multiple fronts. And as I present this tonight, I want you all to hear this in a way that, you know, we understand that there are procedures that are in place and there's a matter of sustainability. There are procedures that are currently in place, but then there needs to be more components fleshed out within that procedure. And then there are procedures that are not substantially in place and will need some more work from a longitudinal standpoint in order to get those implemented and to get that process started. So when we talk about procedures that are currently in place, we can speak specifically to the equity analysis, equitable practices, procedures and programs, as well as the racial incident protocol as procedures that are currently in place. And it's just a matter of sustainability and making sure that we continue to develop and these, and these procedures continue to be utilized. As far as the procedures that are in place, but still need some more developing, and it's kind of an ongoing bit of work, there's a matter of professional development, welcoming school environment, culturally responsive teaching, diverse workplace initiatives and discipline disparities. So again, there are things happening in the institution right now relative to those five areas, but there's still more that's required from the procedures themselves that will have to flesh out, of course, over time. And then lastly, there are four that are not substantially implemented, but need a more, more of a longitudinal development. So we're talking about accountability and monitoring. And that's a long-term one, you know, specifically because there needs to be a detailed accountability report that happens in June. So we'll be looking at all of the procedures themselves and giving that accountability report as to how they have been implemented to that point. There's resource allocation and we are all really, you know, trying to gain some traction in this space. So we'll talk a little bit about that. There's stakeholder and community engagement. Things are certainly happening there, but there's still so much more room to grow in that area. And then leadership, uh, infrastructure. As we all know, we're kind of in a in-between shifting space, right? With our racial equity programming and, and trying to figure out what our next step is going to be. So we'll talk a little bit about that this evening as well. Next slide, please. So for the racial incident reporting protocol, this is one that is currently, or a procedure that is currently in place. The reporting process is actually up and running on all of our web pages or landing pages internally, student-facing as well as public-facing. People are aware of where to go for, for, or how to, how to report. There is a student reporting track as well as an adult reporting track. Currently, we are, we have had a total of three racial incidents. One that has gone through the complete process earlier in the semester and two that are currently going through the process. So again, this is one that is, that's in place and it's all about sustainability and making sure that we continue to utilize and educate people on how to report. Next slide, please. The equity analysis is another one that is in place. So we do have a fully developed racial equity analysis tool. And again, those four steps, number one, to ensure racial equity, set racially desirable outcomes, review data and then determine success indicators and, and racial inequity mitigators. So that is something that is currently being used and we'll talk about that in the next slide. So that racial equity analysis tool dovetails right into the equitable practices, programs and procedures section of the policy. So along with our program evaluations, of course, we have programs that are evaluated annually. Some are evaluated biannually. And the racial equity analysis tool will certainly be a part of that process to ensure racial equity or to ensure that we're considering race and keeping race on the table as we evaluate programs and also make decisions. As I've said before, I've worked with Christopher Thiem and Educational Technology on the big ideas and technology, as well as the virtual desktop infrastructure and just filtering those initiatives through the racial equity analysis tool in order to get, to make sure that we're considering race and keeping that on the table with the, with the implementation of various initiatives.
LeVar, excuse me, could, I wasn't able, if there's a link to the racial equity analysis tool. I'm not there on. I'm not clear on what that is or what it entails. I know we've talked about it generally, but I'm not clear that I have an understanding of what the tool itself is.
Yeah, the tool the tool itself is designed to for for the use of administrators, school leaders to filter any significant decisions that have to happen within the organization. So we want to, again, be sure we we keep race on the table when we when we make those decisions. If you can go back one slide, please. So then, within the racial equity analysis tool, these are the four the four areas that will be focused on as we're again making a decision or you're evaluating a program. As you're going through those, there are a total of ten questions that are housed in each one of these sections that that will bring out in detail or will have you go into detail in terms of your considerations of 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 race. What are the the desired outcomes? What data are we using to make those decisions? And then what are, again, those success and success indicators or or metrics that will use to to show that this decision is going to be a racially equitable one for 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 the institution?
Thank you.
All right. Next slide, please. All right. So we talked about equitable practices, programs and procedures. And again, the racial equity analysis tool will be used as a part of these evaluation, these evaluation programs. Next slide, please. So professional development is another section of the policy and the procedures that are in place, but there is ongoing work that's happening with professional development. So just some examples of some things that have happened this year within professional development. There's been the for leadership, the trauma informed training. So there was the administrative academy through uh with our caring connections, mental health and wellness, of course, the trauma responsive education through PREP that all of ADA went through for the faculty. There's of of course, our care teams, collaborative action research for equity teams, which give that individual professional learning around racial equity. There's work with the the current instructional coaches around differentiation. And then culturally responsive pedagogy, we've done some professional development on that at the start of the of the school year. And there's some continuing work in terms of being able to figure out how we are going to provide sustainable professional development opportunities around culturally responsive pedagogy through some book reads and so forth. And I'll talk a little bit about that. As far as support staff, there's been implicit bias education, racial equity, professional development as of this year as well, utilizing a few of our racial equity affiliates that have been trained to lead that work. Next slide, please. As far as culturally responsive and relevant teaching and learning, again, this dovetails in with the professional development. So again, on our institute day, there was Lisa Westman who gave the keynote on differentiation. And we spoke before about Dewayne Williams and the cultural proficiency professional learning. The ongoing work itself continues with the use of our curriculum evaluation and design manual, which will also be in partnership or used alongside the racial equity analysis tool. And then there is currently work happening with our division, our division heads for leadership development or leading for equity, just to grow that capacity for leading for equity. And we're again using our racial equity affiliates to to do that training with the division heads. And then as far as book studies and the around cultural proficiency, we're looking at both grading for equity and the cultural proficiency manual for school leaders. There's also the work of Goldie Muhammad and Cultivating Genius is the book. So looking at developing a framework or an equity based framework for culturally responsive literacy. So those are just some some texts that we'll be using to to flesh out what that sustainable PD will look like going forward. Next slide, please. So welcoming school environment is a a space where, again, we are being welcoming and inclusive. Again, that ongoing development of our culture of warmth, of course, being difficult with being remote at this point. But that's something that we'll always continue to work on. Prior to our shutdown, there was First Friday Social Gathering for faculty and staff, which was a more a way to be more inclusive and just bring our staff and faculty together in terms of our emotional support. So the strengthening of our multi-tier systems of support and really being data driven in in that process rather than leaning on the referral system. So we can, you know, use our PPS, our PSS teams to to identify students who would need support, whether it be academic or social emotional. The removal of our SRO has been a a huge move in emotional support for students who may have or may experience trauma or or staff who may experience trauma of having an SRO in the building. And then, of course, we'll hear tonight a little bit about the development of a trauma informed interventionist position. Relative to student empowerment, there are a few initiatives going on. And again, we'll have to build on these to bring student voice to the to the table, which I'm a big proponent of. And I understand in in our equity work, we have to highlight student voice in order to really making some some meaningful games gains in our equity aspirations. So, you know, students are just a reflection of our policies, our practices and and how we show up every day in our institution to service them and their families. So their voices are are critical in our work. So far, we've had the Student Town Hall, of course, work with with Thought Exchange. We have some students on the Reimagined Advisory Committee. And we just look again, looking to to grow that student voice. Next slide, please. So stakeholder and community engagement, here's an area where we can can really grow. This is the first bullet point on the on the the procedure itself. So the development of a community education program on identity, race and equity. So you can see the the bullet points there of the folks who would are the the organizations that would, you know, would like to get involved in that work. I'm currently sitting on an anti racist or anti racism advisory committee through the Opel Public Library with David Selup and Rashida Graham Washington, who's doing some great work about really giving libraries a a plan to be able to to operate in an anti racist fashion. So then also sitting on another another organization, which is the Partnership for for Equity or Equity Partners, which has District Ninety Seven and Ninety in there as well, along with the the Public Library. I've had conversations with the with the Park District and really looking to pull all of these entities together and some other organizations to see if we can come up with a way to put together an education program that can be for the community. So those conversations have already started. We'd be looking to put together some sort of 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 curriculum throughout the second semester to roll something out for the community to take advantage of and and really engage in the conversation around race, identity and and equity in the 2021, 2022 school year. Next slide, please. So as far as the diverse workplace initiatives, the Talent Management Plan is in place. There are other elements of the procedure that still needs to be mapped out or or fleshed out. One thing that we've worked on, I've had conversations with Dr. Sanders as well as a group of teachers to to explore affinity groups as a way to and and again, with the Talent Management Plan, we've made gains in terms of being able to hire more a more racially diverse and linguistically diverse staff. But now we really want to think about the retention aspect of of diverse workplace initiatives. So affinity groups will be a way to emotionally support new staff and faculty of color who come into the to the institution. So what we have currently and what's been in place for some years now is a Black Leadership Affinity Group. And we're going to look to take that model and model and and develop other affinity groups. So when we have, again, new staff or faculty that come in, they can have an affinity group that they can pick that they identify with to, again, have not only the actual mentoring piece from their department support them, but again, have that emotional support from from an affinity group. And again, these affinity groups will go across the various departments. So it's not like, you know, you won't have a a new person just kind of tethered to their department. They'd be more integrated into the school in a way that is, you know, shows some collegialism. So next slide, please. So then for discipline disparities, as we know, we have the Behavior Education Plan that is on the horizon. Of course, we can't implement that in a way that we need to just because we're not in school in in person as of yet. But there is a plan to 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 implement that. There's also the development, developing a process to collect and disaggregate data. So we talk about, when talking about discipline data, there's the graduation data, discipline data, and using that to to track institutional trends. So that's something that we we don't necessarily do at this point, but we'd be looking to to develop a system so we can have that data to to drive programming going forward. As far as restorative practices, really as an institution, needed to to clarify the philosophy and the values of restorative practices and really coming up with the the common language to have this conversation about what restorative practices are and what they are not. So we can really dive in and and plan around how we can really implement this into the entire institution. The deans themselves have gone through training through several different opportunities with Umoja. There has been, of course, the TRAP, Trauma Informed Training. So we'll continue to develop and have ongoing training that promotes that restorative practice for for deans. And then from an SEL standpoint, when we think about our instructional coaches, there are a group of instructional coaches who have championed social emotional learning. And we have to really develop a way to harness that that knowledge so we can spread that throughout the throughout the institution as well. But there are conversations happening, again, relative to instructional coaches who can then implement that into the school as well. Next slide, please. As for resource allocation, so not fully implemented to this point. And again, there are a number of things happening, but the number one focus starting out is finding ways to close just the opportunity gaps. And we really want to be aligned. I know that Dr. Pruitt Adams has has her goals of needing to develop a resource framework that aligns our allocation resource or allocation allocation of funds with student need. So we'll be having those conversations. I've I've talked with Cindy Sador about different frameworks that could work to be able to produce that so we could have an opportunity to 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 look at student needs and then how we allocate our funds. Next slide, please. The Equity Leadership Infrastructure. So this is just, again, this would be a yearly evaluation of our infrastructure just to have an understanding of the efficacy of our racial equity work in the district. After, you know, this evaluation, it will lead to recommendations. So a at this point, we're looking at, you know, an equity audit. That is in, we're in the process of looking through a total of nine different potential vendors who could provide that for us. As far as the racial equity programming and partnerships, an equity audit will provide us information to to let us know what it is that we do well, what do we need to do better in terms of our racial equity work and being able to 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 select a racial, a long term comprehensive racial equity partner to to assist us in in our racial equity transformation as as a district. As far as the leadership development, there is the matter of our district equity leadership team and the expansion of that. And of course, we've talked about culturally responsive pedagogy, that that professional development needs to be ongoing and building the infrastructure for that to take place along with restorative practice education and trauma informed education. Next slide, please. And again, as I spoke about accountability and monitoring earlier, that will be, again, a report that will come at the end of the year in June in terms of looking at metrics and 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 understanding how we track the implementation of of the racial equity policy and procedures itself. So with that, I will open open it up for questions from the board.
Thank you. Who would like to go first?
I just have a quick question. First, thank you very much, Lavar, for the presentation. The racial equity tool, is that something that is is hosted somewhere with that? Is it something that could be accessible for folks in the community to better understand it? I think that might be helpful.
Sure, sure. No, it's not posted, but I could the version of it up on the on the website so it can be seen and and described and understood.
That'd be great, you know, maybe some scenarios just so people understand how this would be in action. I think that'd just be helpful just so that we can conceive of of this more vividly. I appreciate that. And then thank you for the thought and and all the, you know, I know this is a ton of moving parts and and in moving a longstanding ship and it takes time and a lot of effort. So you have my support and I believe the entire board, obviously.
Sure. Thank you.
And is there any way you could email the racial equity tool to the board as well, just so that we have a copy of it? Who wants to go next?
Yeah, I I that was actually the topic I I would like, you know, I it relates to that, which is seeing the tool is one thing, but it would be helpful to see, you know, the tool in action, being used and and how it's how it's helping guide our decision making. So that would be more beneficial.
Who else? Who wants to go next? I can't. I don't see hands, but.
It's Gina. I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Gina.
I don't have any either.
Thank you. Ralph or Craig? No? I think it would also be helpful to see the racial incident reporting protocol, like once that's more fully. I know it's brand new and it's sounds like there's one incident that made it all the way through. But I think it'd be helpful to sort of see the life cycle of an incident as well to kind of understand how that's being implemented on the grounds, right?
Okay.
Obviously, not using student names and changing facts as needed.
You may want to come up with one similar to one maybe you've worked on to kind of simulate.
Yeah, I can do that.
And I think some of those, you know, last year, the board had access to the tool. So it may be just sharing that, you know, they had access to all the components that you were working on there. And so you may want to just put them in a in a Google Drive for them or something. Tool and see see the analysis tool, see the protocol. And then when you get the scenarios done, simulated protocol, then you can also add that to them and that way they can have it to refer back to.
All right. Sounds good.
And so one other question that I have is in terms of the the reporting. Are we, at some point, once we have a larger sample size, going to do any sort of surveys or anything to sort of kind of flesh out how how that is changing our culture? I mean, how students are feeling about the process or staff who may have been involved in it?
Yeah, so in in CCB, there was a question that came from one of the members who asked about perhaps an exit survey, right? For students who have gone through that process to find out, you know, you know, did the, you know, did they feel heard going through that process? You know, was it handled in a timely manner and so forth? So we could have that data available. But I think what you're speaking to in terms of of surveys for maybe our entire student body relative to their experiences or what they're feeling, right, in in the school, that's something that can be done as well.
Yeah, and I don't I don't want to be too prescriptive. I just I'm just wondering how we're going to measure the effect we're having, right, with these changes? With these changes. All right, well, thank you very much for that presentation. If there are no more questions or comments from board members? Okay, well, thank you.
That concludes all of the discussion items. The next items are action items, so I'm going to turn it back over to President Spivey.
Thanks, just call me Sarah. All right, so I move that, well, so the administration is recommending that we accept the parking contract. So I move to do so. Is there a second?
Second.
And then, do we want a little background on this or did people feel that the information was sufficient? Okay, can we do a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Martyri.
I'm struggling with my mute button here, yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Isley?
Yes.
And Ms. Dixon Spivey?
Yes. All right, our next action item is the Trauma-Informed School Interventionist Position. I move that we approve the position. It's a new position, it's Trauma-Informed School Interventionist. Is there a second?
Second, Martyri.
Thank you. And this has previously come before the board. I'm assuming, Dr. Pruitt Adams, that you have some additional information?
Yes, so making this presentation is Mr. Greg Johnson, Linda Parker, and Janelle Bishop. We took some of the information that we heard from before and have restructured the information in this item is in compliance with Strategic Plan 2 Transformative and Supportive Learning Environment or GO1 and District Policy 6:65. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Dr. Pruitt Adams. There are, there were several bits of information that we got from the board over the previous conversations, and I think generally they fell into two categories. One, how is this position that we have proposed integrated into the systems of the school? How do we know that this is systematically considered and will be systemically implemented? And the second is, what are the metrics? How are we going to know, very similar to the question that Sir Spivey asked at the end of our last presentation, how do we know that this presentation is linked to specific outcomes? How are we going to measure whether this program is successful or not? And so this presentation here is designed to illustrate that, and it's going to contain not only, well, it'll contain first information that we have been learning over the past several months while proceeding this position, and then also, you know, a projection of where we see it going from here. And Linda is going to start, Linda Parker is going to start with the next few slides as we go in. So Ms. Parker, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening, everyone. Are we showing this, the presentation? Thank you. So right here, we have this graphic to actually illustrate what we're trying to achieve as a school and also where we are on the continuum. The hope is that we can get to become a trauma-responsive school, which is all the way to the right, and that the policies and our systems become institutionalized for our building. Right now, we see ourselves in the first two, the building staff capacity as well as shifting mindsets and practices within the building. How we are trying to make that happen is with the Trauma-Informed Interventionist Position, which we're here for today. Next slide. So we have worked this summer in terms of preparing for just, given the pandemic, understanding that's trauma that our students were going to be bringing with them for this experience we're in, but then also just the greater trauma that students have been experiencing through life as well. These courses that you see here were through the TRAP program, through partnership with the University of Chicago, and several of our Student Services staff as well as administrators took the courses that you see here and the content overview is here as well, understanding more about the science of trauma and matching that with strategies that could truly help to implement with our planning and our tools. And again, we're trying to grow this within our building. This was the start of that, more PD like this is necessary school-wide. Next slide. So our focus has been on trying to bring a trauma-informed lens to our school. From the CDC, you'll see that they have these six guiding principles to a trauma-informed approach. And the most important thing that you see on this slide is that it's not a one-stop shop and deal. It requires constant attention, care, awareness, sensitivity, and it's a change in the culture of our building. So when we think of our welcoming school environment, it's about getting all of the individuals within the building on the same page and able to provide this type of environment for our students so that we can make sure that they feel a part of a community within our school and not re-traumatized in the cases of those who come with trauma. Next slide. Greg, with the metrics?
Yeah, so with the information that we've learned from TRAP and from a variety of other sources, the very end of this, of this presentation has a slide that details some of the work that Linda and her team have looked into as well as, you know, the trainings that we've done. And kind of, you know, going through all of that, this is kind of what we pulled, a good kind of summary of the types of metrics that you would want to look at if you're going to figure out whether a program like this is going to be effective in a school system. I don't have to go over all of these in great detail, but the idea is that you move from, you know, having some sort of systemic way to identify the students that are in most need of intervention and support. And then through outcome measures that you see in the final three bullets. And again, I think it's really important that we illustrate that the metrics that we're looking at, they are things that you know already through our strategic plan and previous presentations that we care about as an organization. In order for this to be truly systemically integrated into the school, it's not like it's a branded position and brand-new metrics are identified. It is, how does this person help, how would this person help to provide a booster shot to systems that are already happening in the organization? And so you'll see that a little bit in our next slide, if I could show this. This is, and I hope you all can read that, I have a different screen up so I can read it a little bigger. Hopefully, we can, there's not a whole lot we can do to make that bigger right now than what we have there. But I just want to explain kind of how this presentation or how this kind of layout works. First, I mean, the theory of action here is that with this new position in place, we would have specific kind of adult behaviors, adult practices that we want to see shifting in the school. You see that in the left-hand column. And rather that just being things that we hope occur in the school in the column immediately to its right that talks about the capacity outputs, the observable evidence of implementation, what types of things will we be able to point to? That say, yep, those things that we said we were going to do, those practices that we wanted to shift as a school are actually developed. And you'll see a list there about, you'll see program evaluation, things that we've already committed to, to some extent. You will see the specific products of a job, right? As far as logs are concerned and implementation integrity checklist and things like that. Linda will be, Linda and her team were the ones who kind of brainstormed all this and worked that out so we can figure out from an adult perspective, how do we expect to see change in practices and behaviors in the school? And she'll be able to speak to some of these with, with all of these with a greater level of specificity. But if we shift over to the right, you'll see these student outcomes, and these also fall into two categories. First, in a general descriptive sense, what are we aiming for, right? What types of student behaviors would we expect to see shifting in the school if this position is in fact systemically implemented as you see in the left? And you see that description there in the middle column there. And then on the right-hand side, you see the more quantitative metrics. And these metrics are ones that will hopefully look familiar to you, right? And I'm going to talk very briefly about these four before we wrap up and open up for questions. We looked at four different types of outcomes here, all right? The first is our early warning system data. And you see that's described there in very general terms. I had a lot of conversation with our Coordinator of Learning Analytics and Lincoln Chandler about how we can use our early warning system data, not only for what we use it for now, which is a way to kind of screen our students and with conjunction of our PSS teams, identify students for intervention. So we use it kind of as a descriptive tool at this point, but use it as more of a predictive tool. So we have some data analysis to do with that day. We were working with Lincoln today on this to try to find a way to ensure that this isn't just something that, you know, works as a way to kind of help get kids to interventions, but overall, does this data set that we have work as a predictive measure? So we're cranking that out. In the next few weeks, we will be presenting our strategic plan to the board, and we hope to have that, those measures cranked out in time for that presentation. And then there's a culture climate survey in here as well. The board might remember, not last school year because of the disruptions we've had, but the year previously, we talked about moving away from our culture climate survey that we had done with Hannibal Research and moving towards one that allows us to better disaggregate, racially disaggregate the data that we get in from our culture climate survey. We would still want to do that. And so the metrics that you see here are the ones that we had from the last survey that we were able to successfully implement. But these are two measures that speak to a welcoming environment in the school, things that we would expect to see shift with the implementation of this position. Again, also identified in the strategic plan are those behavior data points that you see described there. Those aren't brand-new, those are also in our strategic plan, updated slightly from the data that we had for our full semester last school year. And the final one is the five essential survey results. The data for this recently came out, and so there are two measures in there that speak pretty effectively to what we want to be able to do as a school district. One is, and you saw them listed on some of the earlier pages that Linda was talking about. So, and that is the safety metric that they have and the student-teacher trust metric. These are both ones that kind of speak towards how connected students feel to the school. You see kind of the aggregate scores there on this page. And one thing that happened last school year, now this is our second year with it, which is a nice shift in in the five essential surveys data, is that it is disaggregated. And so you can see on this second slide here, if you could go down to the next slide for a second, I just put this in there to kind of illustrate that this is a data point that is disaggregated, and you see these measures here. So we would expect to see, expect to see, you know, improvement in these areas. So these are the metrics that will help us, you know, to see that if we're in fact having an effect on the overall organization. I think that's all I'll say at this point, and then I'll open it up to whatever questions people may have, okay? Unless Linda or Janelle, who's on this as well, to help answer questions if they have anything they'd like to add before I do that.
Just one more piece, evidence piece from the TRAP program that was implemented this year during remote learning. So as a result of needing a universal tier-one practice, the mindfulness that students experienced through advisory during the remote session was actually told to us in the TRAP program as a research-based initiative that helps to build the cognitive and emotional self-regulation for students, that also helps to lead to their building behavioral self-regulation. So we're teaching students skills in order to allow them to do some of the work of repairing themselves as they are in this remote environment. I speak to that because, of course, where it has its rockiness, in how advisory is in the schedule for remote, it is still a practice that's important to teach students skills that are necessary to grow them. And I believe with this interventionist, we can do more things of that nature and push out more to our staff in order to build their capacity so that the students can have theirs affected as well.
Yeah, Gina.
I don't actually have any questions, I just have a comment. Thank you so much for this. This is exactly what we asked for, wanting to see the way that you laid out the adult capacity outcomes and the student outcomes and how this role actually will accomplish those things. This is very, very helpful. So I just wanted to thank you for hearing the request for this information and for metrics and actually demonstrating it. It's real, this is really useful information. And
Thank you.
And seeing the scope, you know, seeing this, seeing this scope is a lot different than seeing what we saw before with the, just with the job description. Like actually understanding how it's implemented, this makes a huge difference because now this feels like it would be a doable piece for a person to, you know, with a team of, you know, the deans or whoever's on the team to support that work. So I just really appreciate this presentation a lot, and I'm very supportive of what I'm seeing. So I just wanted to thank you for taking the time to put it together in that way.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Other comments or questions?
Yes.
Okay, Tom.
So my question that I have is, the metrics that were shown on one slide...
Yeah, can we pull that back up, actually? Jackie, if we could? Not Jackie Moore, Jackie McGoy.
Yeah, that would be real helpful.
Yes. Yeah, this slide, thank you, just a little bit, yeah, there we go.
So are we saying that this individual, if, you know, when brought on board, our expectations are in the right-hand column, that we will see those as deliverables?
Contributing.
Yes, contributing, thank you, Linda, that's exactly it. So it would be, and actually, I'm glad you asked that because we can clarify, if, I don't want anybody to interpret, we don't want anybody to interpret, that this individual person is going to individually bring about these outcomes, right? It's, these are outcomes that we know we care about as a school and that this person is going to be part of the system that helps to produce them. Does that answer the question, Tom?
Yeah, and I guess I thought it was, they were more contributing, but, you know, I mean, I'm going to put my perspective on the line here, okay? Because I've expressed it last time. Since I've been on the board, I just did some looks and we've added 48 positions, okay? Which is over 10% of the staff. The school is, the student population has increased by maybe 1% or 2% during that time. And each time, there's been a compelling reason of what to do and why to do it. Yet, overall, are we achieving what we say we, you know, we were hoping to achieve, which, you know, we need clarity on, we, you know, are we closing the gaps and addressing it? And so from my perspective, the days have gone of just, you know, emotion. I want to know, and in that time, not only we added, but we've not, I don't know of any that we've said, we're not going to do, we're going to stop doing this. And so that's where my mindset is at, and I want to know that we can sit and say, okay, this is what, this is the path we're going, and we're going to check ourselves against this. And if it isn't, then we're going to have to reassess and say, okay, then we didn't get what we wanted, either the program wasn't right or we were going in the wrong direction, but that has not occurred. So that's where I struggle.
Oh, I will say this to you. As a district, we've put a concerted effort the last two and a half to three years to move in a restorative direction and to address behavior differently, to address the disparities that currently exist between our black and brown kids as it relates to discipline. I will also say, over time, not just at Oak Park but across the country, mental health issues and social-emotional issues as students are growing, particularly due to this pandemic. We have instituted a program evaluation. This would not be void of that. If the metrics aren't achieved before you throw it out, you do have to take the opportunity to make changes in order to see if it works. But that's one of the reasons we put in place a program evaluation tool so that we won't continue to do the same thing over and over and respect different results. But we are committed to restorative practices and to providing the support that our students need as it relates to social-emotional aspects so that they can achieve academically. Because in a lot of cases, this stands in the way.
Thank you for that.
And I would also point out that this actually is coming up... And I would also point out that this actually is coming about in part because we removed the SRO position.
Yes.
Yes, I was in it. Thank you.
And I do believe in the slide that was shown about the supportive environment measurements from the five essentials is key just because that is self-reported by the, the individuals who completed. And one data point that I thought, as you can notice, most of these can come up. But if you look in the safety on the left for Black and African-Americans, where it says 36, that 36 for last school year is 11 points up from the year preceding this. And last year, and again, I can't say that the culture of warmth that we started to do in the building is the only factor for that, but that we began that and it was spoken about throughout the building as having quite an impact. And when I saw this, I, I say, it, it might have contributed to that number as well. So as these indicators go up, I think we will also have a good self-reporting from the individuals here.
Yeah, these are all taken from, this, this is all student reporting from the student portion of that, of that questionnaire.
And I believe we've heard consistently from our students that they want mental health and social-emotional support. That was one of the things when the Park District was talking about the center that they built, that our students said that's what they need.
This is Martiri. So, you know, I agree with Gina's comments to thanking the administration for producing a nice packet here with some solid information. So that was great. As the Tom's concerns, I'm going to go back to why I supported this position from the beginning. From a resource allocation standpoint, this is one of the best evidence-based practices that you could implement. It has really been shown to enhance student achievement over time, and its effect size is easily more than two times statistically significant. So when we talk about resource allocation going forward and positions going forward, I think the right step is, is implementing positions that correspond well with the evidence-based model and are research-based and have this track record of enhancing student achievement. And frankly, maybe some of these other positions, Tom, that have been hired over your term on the board, as they come up or as people leave, we could think about either eliminating them or replacing them with more of these evidence-based positions. We need more than one tier-two interventionist in this, a building this size, I would think. But it's a great step in the right direction and it's a great utilization of resources. And I do believe it's moving us into alignment with what the evidence suggests actually works. So I applaud the administration for putting it on the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Others?
Hi, it's Jackie. I want to say thank you. I appreciate this fleshed-out proposal that, you know, links the, the metrics and has some guideposts as to what the plan is. And it does seem to line up with the, the work that we're trying to do. So I am, have, I don't think I've ever been against or saying that we don't need and that our students don't need to have social-emotional supports that are trauma-informed. So I'm glad that we're thinking in this direction. I do, and I, perhaps it is tenure on the board as well. I am concerned that, that we continue to add on positions. And, and they all are well-intentioned from, you know, our reorg of our administrative leadership to our equity coaches to restorative work. And I have to say, I paused a little bit as, as we talk about the, the, what the progress because when we're talking about the restorative practices work, you know, we're three, four years in and I'm hearing tonight still earlier that coming up with a definition for our institution for restorative work. So I, I hope we're not spreading ourselves too thinly in an attempt to cover all of the evidence-based practices that have shown to be successful. Because at the end of the day, we can have as many as we can afford perhaps, but we have to be able to, to show the impact. And that is something that I, I think that we have to do to also show where things can be either eliminated or subsumed in other positions. But I am supportive of this.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Craig or Matt?
Yeah.
The two left.
I'll be quick. You know, thank you for putting it together. It is what we asked and it's, it's very, very helpful. So that is appreciated. But I'll echo the comments of the rest of my colleagues that there is a substantial amount of resource focused on these issues and we just need to be sure that we're evaluating that resource and applying it the best ways. Thanks.
Thank you.
And, you know, I was not able to be part of the first discussion last month. I had to miss that portion of our meeting, but I do, I did review it later and I appreciate that my fellow board members, in particular Gina, expressing strong appreciation for the heightened detail. One thing too is that we had this police, school resource officer position for 18-plus years and didn't really, as an institution, over that time, do a very good job of evaluating it and really assessing, is this working? Is this effective? Where can this be maybe better deployed? And I'm confident based on all of the input going in now, that that won't be the case here, that this is going to be reassessed very closely all along the way. And so I wish it much success and I appreciate, you know, the, the detail that's been provided here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, very nice report. Thank you so much for providing that. I think we can call the roll. Yeah. Yes. Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Mr. Baron?
Yes.
Mr. Martiri?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Jakowski?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
And Ms. Dixon Spivey?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. On behalf of our students, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. We're looking forward to hearing more about it in the months that come. All right, information, presentation levy timeline, which we went through last, last meeting. Are there any future agenda items?
Sarah, I'd like to propose a future agenda item. You know, with, with such a big discussion of capital projects and capital activity coming up and re-looking at the scope of what we're trying to do, I, I guess I'd like the board to consider a board-level committee, which would involve a couple of board members and administration and community members. I'm not thinking of a large imagined thing. I'm thinking of some architects to work with administration, to work with the board, to assemble a strong plan on an ongoing basis that, that has community input as well as administration and board input before it gets to the board. So.
And just to clarify, Craig, you're speaking specifically to the capital projects or to the maintenance or both?
I'm thinking of capital projects, which include both. And, you know, I will work to help frame that discussion. You know, or frame it, depends on what you want. But I think it's a, I, I'd like, if people are interested in having it, I'd like to have that conversation.
Yeah, sounds good. Craig, I'll talk to you more about it in the coming weeks and we can prepare something for the, for the board to discuss. Anyone else have any suggestions for future agenda items?
You know what, Sarah, this is more, I guess, to try to have it be on a monthly basis again. Maybe it's already in the pipeline, but the employee of the month, the volunteer of the month. I just wanted to make sure that we get back on track with that. Because I feel like there's some amazing things going on despite the displacement that's occurred. I had the privilege of being part of a Zoom session with a teacher who invited me to be a part of it today. That was outstanding, Michael Soper's Holocaust class. And so he'd be my nominee. But anyway, I just want to put that out there, just to kind of see if we can get that back on a regular cycle.
Thank you, Matt. I would echo that as well.
You know what, Sarah, it, Matt just made me think about something. Thank you, Matt. Potentially, could we get an update on, I know that there was a grant, a large grant that was connected to SEL. I don't recall all the details of that, but I would love to hear how that's going. And I know that it was like a collaborative effort. So if we could talk about that at some point, that would be great as well.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for your time and your energy, but I move that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, everyone. Have a good night. Thank you so much.